I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidgegal and Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney cave, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Thank you. I will now call on councillor Luxford to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council, and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick in Australia.
Thank you. There are no calls, apologies, or leave of absence, and no requests for attendance by audio-visual link. We now move to confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting of the 27th of February 2024. Can I have someone, a mover, move councillor Chapel? Seconded councillor Olive, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to the confirmation of the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting of the 11th of March 2024. May I have a mover? Move councillor Wilson, seconded councillor Hamilton, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interests? Councillor Olive.
Yes, one of the speakers tonight, Rena Wade, is known to me, and was sort of in my role as a councillor, and as a friend, I guess, as well. So, you know, sort of, that's a non-pecuniary interest. And also with the community investments programme, one of the donations is to choirles, and I know the choir master from choirles, that's a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest as well, I'll be voting on that.
Councillor Sed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. CP12/24, Coogee Bay Hotel. In previous years, I was on the planning panel, and in case I get called up again, so I won't be in the meeting.
Councillor Wilson.
I am currently a member of the planning panel, but I have never been to a meeting regarding Coogee Bay Hotel. And I will ask councillor Sed to attend as an alternate on my behalf, so that I can vote on this motion tonight.
Councillor McCafferty.
On the Coogee Bay Hotel, I am on the planning panel, and I will be leaving the meeting for that debate.
I have two declarations. One is for MM9/24. I do know one or two members of Rotary through my work in the community, but it's a non-significant, non-pecuniary, and I will be voting on the matter. Also, on CC2/24, Community Investment Programme, one of the recipients is known to me, but it is a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, and I will be voting on the matter. Thank you. There are no further declarations? Oh, councillor Parker.
CO1O/24 Maruba Seal Club, request for a release of the deed. I believe I'm a general member of the Maruba Seals. It's a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, you have to be a member to gain access to the facility.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillors, if you become aware of a conflict, you can make a declaration at any time during the meeting. We now move to the address of council by members of the public. I will read the chairperson's announcement and privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 5.0 to 5.23 of council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of the council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of four minutes in which to put their case forward, with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission. Our first speaker is speaking in relation to CP12/24, Coogee Bay Hotel DA, DA/437/2021, 212 Arden Street, 227 to 233 Coogee Bay Road, 5 to 7 and 15A Vickers Street Coogee, speaking for Ms Rena Wade.
Thank you for your attention, councillors. Many of you were not on council for the resolution moved by councillors Bowen and Roberts, I think two years ago, opposing this DA and forwarding council's objections to the panel. And I urge you to do the same this evening, as a DA is still totally unacceptable to the community. 9,290 community members signed a petition against the DA, 140 people submitted objections to the amended plans last year, and despite the short notice, look at the number of people who are here tonight. So these amended plans addressed a few issues. But unfortunately, the council report before you does not outline the significant issues not addressed. The excessively non-complying height remains 78% above the LEP limit of 10 metres in the foreshore zone, and in the south and north-west corners of the site. And this impacts on views from public spaces to the Coogee foreshore. The visual impact assessment report, that massive report, shows this quite clearly. And it's important to note that views from public places, such as headlands and reserves, are protected in the foreshore zone controls of the LEP. So that's public views. Private views for hundreds of residents too will be impacted fully or in part, once again, as shown in the visual assessment. And despite the rate of development in Coogee, these views have been protected up the ridge since 1988 by the 12-metre height limit that applies to developments in the foreshore zone. And regarding the visual assessment report, many residents whose views will be affected were not included, and some of them here tonight. And then we also know that the photos were taken from standing positions, despite residents' efforts to have them taken from sitting positions. After all, that's most of us sit and relax at home, don't we, so, and enjoy the view. So the amended plans do not address... In addition, the amended plans do not address the needs of tenants of the low-cost dwellings on the site. Critically, the amended plans added an entirely new element to the proposal, a three-storey block of hotel rooms extending to the Arden Street boundary, right opposite the foreshore. This will obscure the view to the 1870s hotel building from the foreshore, and sandwich it behind and between this new building and the Robertson wing. For over 150 years, this two-storey 1870s building has held its own on this site. Its heritage scale and proportions have been at the heart of Coogee's heritage character all this time, as cited by Grace Kaskins in her heritage report of some years ago. So the council report also does point out that this new block will overshadow units at 230 Arden Street and block their views. They had no opportunity to be part of the view assessment review. And this new block runs alongside a covered driveway all the way to Arden Street. The construction of that covered driveway requires a removal of five Washington Palms. And these tall, very slender, characterful palms are of heritage importance, having been part of the 1920s beautification of Coogee, and mentioned in numerous heritage reports on the hotel. They are a silent and central part of Coogee's character. The same palms on public land in Coogee are on the Significant Tree Register. So the newly-covered driveway is also...
You may have a one-minute extension.
Thank you. Is a pedestrian hazard. There is absolutely no visual access left or right for drivers as they leave the site to cross the footpath. And this footpath is used by happy-go-lucky beachgoers on warm days and summer months, and revelers at night and early morning, many the worse for wear. So guess what will happen there? There is also a large electricity utility on the footpath at the entrance of the proposed driveway. So it's just that bulk on Arden Street is just not on. Other major problems include the congestion on Arden Street with traffic from 159 additional car spaces, and four to five deliveries a day for each of the new retail outlets. Now, I'm sure you would all agree, those of you who visit Coogee, Arden Street is often a car park, it was tonight. And locals don't use it anymore, they go up to Mount Street and use the residential streets, which has got its own implications. So in conclusion, I request that councillors make a submission to the panel, and include these significant objections I've outlined. And I'd just remind everyone that Coogee was declared a seaside village in 1838, perhaps the first in Sydney. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor Pendlefinney.
Thanks, Rena. Could you tell us a little bit about the loss of affordable housing and the impact that that will have?
Okay, well, I'd rather call it low-cost housing, because... Anyway, this was something that I was quite shocked at the panel in the first meeting, that the public were allowed to observe. And discussion was made of the, you know, bad state of these properties. These properties include a beautiful three-storey art deco building with the finest wood features inside, that's still intact and is beautiful, and it's been demolished. But even more important than the buildings themselves, there are 35 residential dwellings in these buildings. People who live in them are local workers, some work at the hospital. They're people on disability and age support. There are several women escaping domestic violence. They've all been able to find a home in this part of Coogee, where they don't need to have much money, because they can buy their things locally at the shops. They don't need to catch buses. None of them have cars, so they're not adding to the traffic, and they're part of our community. Families have been raised in some of these buildings, and the kids have gone to the local schools, joined in the Nippers, and been eventually in the surf club. So this is a significant population within the Coogee area, or within the Randwick area. And we all hear so much in the newspaper about homeless people, and middle-aged women and middle-aged men living in cars, and the lack of affordable housing, certainly the lack of low-cost housing. And I don't know how council could put its name to something that sends 35... Residents of 35 units out onto the streets. Because most of them fear, the ones I've spoken to, fear they will be homeless as a result of this activity. So thank you for the question, because it's really... I mean, it's probably not a planning matter, but it seems everything's up for grabs these days, so why not make it a planning matter?
Are there any further questions? If not, thank you very much. Well, now move to the next speaker, speaking on item NM21/2024, Notice of Motion from Councillor McCafferty. Council investigate issues concerning traffic safety, parking and access for emergency and council vehicles on Pitt Street, Randwick. We have speaking for, Ms Julie Hughes. There's also been a request from Ms Carolene Foley to present, to speak jointly for four... You have four minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Carolene Foley from 31 Pitt Street, Randwick. I've lived there for 10 years.
And I'm Julie Hughes. I live in 22 Pitt Street, and I've lived in Pitt Street for 35 years.
The issue is the north end of Pitt Street is so narrow that when there's cars parked on either side of the road, the width being 6.5 metres, it can't fit an emergency vehicle through into Pitt Street. The solution is simple. There's already a half-day of no parking on Thursday mornings on one side of just the north end of Pitt Street. And this is so that the garbage truck can fit into the street and collect the garbage. So we're proposing that we extend that half a day across the rest of the week, so that fire engines and ambulances can access the street. It's six car spaces, and this keeps approximately 120 people safe. It's not safe, as we've already had a fire truck and an ambulance attempt to access this part of the street, and they've been turned away. So it's just a matter of time before there's a tragedy, which can easily be avoided.
Hi, so I'm Julie. I just wanted to give you an example of two incidents we've had in Pitt Street. About a year ago, a former neighbour in 29 Pitt Street had a heart attack at home. His wife called the ambulance, the ambulance arrived, the big ambulance, couldn't get into the street. So they sent for a smaller vehicle, and the smaller vehicle eventually arrived into Pitt Street, thankfully got him to hospital. And he was in hospital for months, recovering, but yeah, it was pretty terrible and frightening for the elderly couple. The other thing was something that happened to me a few years ago. I called the fire brigade with a question, and the fire brigade insistently said, "No, we're coming to you now." And I, "Well, there's no need to come, I think we're okay." "No, no, no, we're coming." So I thought, oh, I felt terrible. But anyway, so they come down. And it took a while, and eventually two fabulous firemen come flying to the front door, you know, all tears, and I told them the problem. And they said, look, you know, they checked the situation, everything was fine. And they said, "Look, thank goodness your house wasn't on fire, because we cannot get a fire truck down to you. So you need to be aware of that, that we can't get a fire truck to you, and you know, you should probably tell someone." And of course, I never got around to it until today. But it was a bit of a scare, because if my house was on fire, it's just going to burn to the ground. And I won't be able to get a fire truck to the house. Because of the congestion, they tried to come down through another street, but they got stuck in that street. So it's... And we're at the very dead end of the street. So everybody before us has got the same issues. So I was just, would like the council to think about our request, for safety's sake. Fire, ambulance, the garbage trucks, well, they've got themselves solved on the Thursday morning. So thank you for listening to our problem. It seems a small problem compared to Coogee Bay Hotel, but we do thank you for listening to our problem. Thank you very much.
Councillors, are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
No, thank you very much. Thank you, councillors. We'll now move on to the merrill minutes. MM9/24, Financial Assistance and Donations, January to February 2024. I will take these as read, if there's any discussion. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to MM10/24, Request for Report Fundraising at the Step Out Speak Out Walk. This has been something that's been raised in council, I believe, from different community members and staff for a number of years. It was raised in a meeting with me by a local service provider. This is a call for a report to see if this idea, again, that has been requested by community members, may be feasible or not, and exactly how, if so, how we would go about doing it. So it's possible it could be a really good opportunity, while we have so many people at this event, and while awareness is high, to potentially raise some funds to provide to our local service providers. If there's no discussion, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to MM11/24, Motion for the 2024 National Assembly of Local Government, seeking significant additional... seeking significant additional funding to be made directly to local government for the purposes of public housing. Councillors, there's been much discussion and debate over the last 12 months or more regarding the Housing Australia Future Fund. There were some briefings provided in the last month or so. But as it stands, councils and community and social housing providers can only access 10, potentially 30% grant funding or in fact loan funding. So this is actually seeking a little bit of an increase in that to make it, you know, possible for councils to look at building some of their own community housing and affordable and public housing as council, Randwick Council is doing in conjunction with Waverley and Wallara at the moment. If there's no, oh, councillor Rosenfeld.
Madam Mayor, my concern with this is just as far as if we're going to look at interest-free loans up to 50%, 50% of the project cost. I'm really concerned how much that will cost the federal budget. And I know, obviously, I can't really work out a figure now, but I could just imagine, you know, if this is to be something that we bring to the national conference that's adopted by councils around the country, that we're quite an impulse every, every time the treasurer rises in mate to deliver the budget.
Councillor Rosenfeld, if I may respond briefly.
Oh, I was just going to respond that the money that is here is from the half, which is money that is hypothecated to be spent from, from the fund. So it's not actually going to touch the bottom line of the budget at any point in time, because that is literally how the half works. They're not borrowing to get this money. That money is already sitting there in the half. This is what it's supposed to be expended for delivering housing. So we're just looking to do that in the most efficient way.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare that carried. We'll now move to MM12/24, cost shifting onto local government. This is based on a model Meryl Minnit provided through local government in New South Wales. The issue of cost shifting has been an issue of concern for councils for quite a number of years now, and it only continues to escalate. So again, this is just supporting a request from local government in New South Wales to put an advocacy position to reduce the significant amount of cost shifting that is occurring. Councillor Hay.
I'd like to move an amendment if possible. If I have, there's. I like a lot of the motion. I think it's well-written, except I just, the, in the bottom of point C where it talks about regulatory reform and, and appropriate funding. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't looking to increase rates on our residents above and beyond the rate peg, which is a, which, as we all know, it's the, it limits the amount that which we can increase rates on residents, and it's tied to inflation, among other things. And I just wanted to be sure that that's, we're talking about regulatory reform, we're thinking about smart ways to reduce costs, not to increase the cost on our residents.
Yeah, that's correct, councillor Hay. This is not about increasing rates. It's about requesting that the state government reduce cost shifting on the cost burden onto councils and by virtue of the rate payers. So, yeah, we're hoping to actually decrease costs being imposed on local councils and rate payers. Yeah, I. Look, councillor Hay, just, it's quite a separate issue from this Meryl Minnit. Could I suggest that you perhaps bring it as a motion to the next meeting? Because this is about cost shifting. It's not about, you know, to do with cost shifting such as the emergency services levy. It's not really, it's quite a separate issue. You know, I just kindly request that you would consider withdrawing that and putting it as a motion, as a motion.
With due respect, my, it does talk about rate pegging in the background, and point C does point at regulatory reform. I read it as an open-ended question, so I'd like to put it as amendment.
Yeah, I don't accept the amendment. Councillor Hay.
So basically, I haven't written a grand speech on this, but ultimately, we are in a cost-of-living crisis right now. We have to make a decision on how to wisely spend our money and how to not increase the burden on the families that, within our community. And if we keep increasing rates, I'm not even saying that we should be against raising rates in line with inflation among other factors, but mostly inflation. I'm saying that we should not be, that that's the limit of where we should put the increasing rates to. So I'm all for regulatory reform, budgetary provisioning and appropriate funding. We just should say right here, right now, we are not in this to increase resident rates above and beyond the rate peg. Thank you.
Councillor Burst is the secondor.
I support councillor Hay on this. I think it's important that we don't get lost in that, that cost shifting becomes a rate payer problem, and we need to make sure that doesn't happen. But we need to, we need to make sure the cost shifting doesn't happen. We also need to make sure that the rate payer increases don't happen either. So I support this motion.
So councillor Chapel.
So can I just jump in just for one minute? I just wanted to correct the amendment. It's A, B, C and D. At the moment, it just reads that there's a point D, but councillor Hay is including, yeah.
Yes, so for the point of clarity, I'll just quickly say that I intend to move A, B and C in full and with point D added to the motion.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. I'm just rise to speak against the amendment. The whole purpose of this minute is about rate shifting to local government from the state government. When we're writing to the premier and the treasurer and the minister for local government, we're seeking that they actually take the steps they need to stop shifting onto councils the responsibility for things that have been state responsibilities. So the emergency services levy is a perfect example, where there was a cost that was borne through insurance, that was managed through that system through the state, and then there was a political decision to shift that to councils to collect. And it eats up a large chunk of what we can collect from our residents' rates. And it's not something that should actually paid that way, but it was a political decision to do it. So all this is seeking to do, the substantive motion, is just to rebalance that and to seek an end to that constant cost shift. There's, you know, significant reports detailing the ins and outs of what has been cost shifted over the years, and it's really significant. It's nothing to do with the rate pack peg, except insofar as council is subject to a rate peg and then keeps getting costs loaded up onto us. I mean, none of this is us being irresponsible with money or, you know, throwing it around the room. It's about the fact that the state government is making us do work that is traditionally theirs, and that needs to stop. And I think we need to, you know, remove this amendment, just make the initial strong principled stand that councils around the country are making to actually reverse this situation.
Are there any other speakers? If not, I will put the amendment. All those in favour? Against? No. I declare the amendment lost. We will now move back to the Meryl Minnit division. There's been a call for a division. All those in favour? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Burst and councillor De Souza. All those against? Councillor Pendlefinney, councillor Nielsen, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd and the mayor. I declare the amendment lost. We now vote on the Meryl Minnit. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. We now move to GM3/24, which was presented as the supplementary paper, general managers' report. Randwick alcohol-free zone extension to include Waratah Avenue Plaza.
Sorry, apologies. Sorry.
Ah, yes.
Sorry.
Correct.
Point of order. No, no, point of order. I have urgent business.
Apologies, councillor Hay. What is your urgent business?
I sent through an email to Mr Kelly to outline the urgent motion. I was, this is urgent on two grounds. One, that I was sent this after the deadline for submitting notices of motion. And number two, that it relates to the cycleway forum that will start on the 8th of April. It would be good to have worked progress, to have started progress on this motion before we have the 8th of April cycleway forum.
Yes, I do consider this urgent. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillors, I've been informed by a resident that cars coming east along Tobman Avenue and turning south onto Doncaster are regularly overshooting the turn and hitting a low-rise cycleway barrier. I was sent a video by a resident of a flat tyre being caused. Now, this has, this is dramatically unsafe for both, obviously, the, the cars hitting the barrier, but also if they overshoot the turn anymore, they could easily hit a cyclist. So I suggest, I commend this motion.
Seconded by councillor Hamilton.
Thank, thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I commend this urgent motion as both myself and councillor Hay spoke with a resident, and they shared this video evidence. And it was pretty serious. I mean, the fact that the person wasn't injured in their own vehicle as they hit the concrete barrier is, I think, pretty remarkable. But from the reports of residents directly living within that intersection, they've said that this happens multiple times. So as people are coming around, they just can't see this very small, I mean, it should be small, but it's a gutter that's dividing the dedicated cycleway with Doncaster Avenue. So I think that this is a really sensible motion for us to put to council staff to look at, especially in light of the cycleways review that you're going to be having for West Ward residents.
Thank you. Councillor Luxford.
Yeah, look, I commend the motion, but I do believe that the general manager is aware of this issue. And meetings have been held to address the situation. And I believe the general manager was going to do a tour. So can I ask, have you been down to do your inspection?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, madam mayor. Not yet.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, madam mayor. I mean, obviously, I have no issues with us looking into what sounds like an obvious safety issue where drivers are having issues, but it's not clear to me why this needs to be brought as urgent business rather than just sent through to the traffic committee. Like, we, we need to reserve council time for stuff we all need to make a decision on together. I'm sure we're all happy to support looking into this issue, but we could just email it through to the traffic committee and have the experts look at it.
If there's no further discussion, I will put it. All those in favour? Those against? I declare that carried. We'll now go through the agenda items in Sereatum. CP7, oh, sorry, GM3/24. Have you got that one?
Are you going to do the general manager's report? So you're going back to it? Okay, you haven't forgotten it, though.
So we're going through the agenda items in Sereatum. I'm going to start with the general manager's report that was put through as a supplementary business paper, GM3/24, Randwick Alcohol-Free Zone Extension to Include Waratah Avenue Plaza, challenged by councillor Hay. CP7/24 Compliance and Enforcement Policy, councillor Chapel. CP8/24 Planning Agreements Policy, 2024 Post-Exhibition Report, councillor Parker.
Challenge. I have a question.
Councillor Parker. CP9/24. Councillor Parker. Can we wait till it's read out, please? Thank you. CP10/24 Variations to Development Standards Under Clause 4.6, 1st of February to 29th February 2024, unchallenged. CP11/24 Bundock Street Defence Housing Redevelopment, challenged by councillor Olive. CP12/24 Coogee Bay Hotel, DA4 threat 3.7/2021. Any challenges? Councillor Olive. CS6/24 Heffron Park, councillor Parker. CS7/24 South Marribra Boardwalk Extension and Gate, councillor Chapel. CS8/24 Naming Randwick's Roads, Reserves and Facilities Policies, councillor Sedd. CS9/24 Fig Tree Removal Nine Woodlands Street, Coogee. Unchallenged. Oh, councillor Chapel. CS10/24 Snake Park Indoor Sporting Facility, councillor Parker. Councillor Parker. CC1/24 Oral History Project Recording Lapru's Elders, councillor Pendlefinny. CC2/24 Community Investment Programme, unchallenged. CC3/24 Illumination of Randwick Town Hall Policy, councillor Olive. CC4/24 Report Back on Criteria for Mayor's Contingency Fund, unchallenged. CO10/24 Marribra Seals Club Request from Release of Deed, councillor Burst. CO11/24 Investment Report, February 2024, unchallenged. CO12/24 Monthly Financial Report, as of 29th of February 2024, unchallenged. Do I have a mover for the unchallenged items? Councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor, actually, yeah, Burst. All those in favour? Those against? I declare that carried. So we now move to, actually, anyone challenge your one? I didn't see you challenge it. Councillor Hay. We now move to GM3/24, Waratah Plaza, alcohol-free zone, moved by councillor Hay.
Thank you. I'd like to, I have sent an email just now to Mr Kelly, so it may not have appeared. But I would also, we've recently built the Waratah Plaza, and obviously, obviously, it's a great thing, and we don't want too many people drinking alcohol there. But we've also got an entire Randwick Town Centre master plan that is in the works. And so I'd like to, investigation be done to investigate the extension of the alcohol-free zone to Arthur Lane and other areas affected by the Randwick Junction Town Centre Strategy and associated master plan. Ultimately, we're going, if you recall the master plan that we voted on last year, there's a lot of laneways, a lot of art installations, and a lot of areas where we want people to have a good time congregating and, yeah, but, but doing, doing so in a socially acceptable manner. And we want responsible service of alcohol done at good local restaurants. We don't want, we don't want any antisocial behaviour to potentially break out. So I'd like to, in addition to what's been done, we just look at more alcohol-free zone in due course. Thank you.
Is there a secondor? Councillor Pendlefinny used to speak. Are you seconding this?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to commend this amendment because we do want to have vibrant town centres. And we do also want to understand that, you know, having homeless issues and alcohol issues isn't a crime, and that it is important to actually look at the health reasons behind these things. And yes, we are trying to build vibrant town centres, and we don't want to just kind of make everywhere an alcohol-free zone. I would also like to ask through to the general manager for events and things like that. Would something like this be waived if there were going to be, you know, things like if we maybe moved, we had festivals and things like that in the area?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I would be.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Chapel.
I mean, I'm not going to oppose the motion, but I do think we should be wary of extending alcohol-free zones as if it was solving some antisocial behaviour problem and not actually just giving a discretionary power that is only enforced against some segments of the community. I'm guessing every single person in this horseshoe has been to a picnic at one of the beaches and had a drink. Because that actually just is extremely, extremely common and all of those areas are alcohol-free. It's used as a discretion reinforcement mechanism. There are other laws available to deal with, you know, misconduct and problematic behaviour in public. We don't actually need, you know, tip-out laws on top of it. I think, you know, this is an area near where there are many young people from the university. It is entirely possible, you know, that one day there may be something where people might sit there and have a civilised drink in a public place because it costs like fifteen dollars to get a glass of wine at a bar. And, you know, if you're a student, you can't actually afford that. So again, not opposing this, but I really do think we should, you know, this knee-jerk thing where we make all our centres and all of our beaches and all of everything alcohol-free as if it's the end of that problem, I think is just unrealistic.
Uh, councillor Olive.
Yeah, I'm not sure about this either because it just seems very ad hoc. And I, I understand, you know, sort of I understand, you know, sort of why Goldstein Reserve and other places, you know, sort of have alcohol bans. Because, I mean, there's been experience down there. It's close by the Coogee Bay Hotel. There've been, you know, sort of large events that have got a bit out of hand and things like that. But at Randwick, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything, any similar kind of situation. So we're talking here about, you know, sort of like a, the Waratah Avenue Plaza, which is a new area, a lovely area, you know, sort of which has been designed. And, you know, sort of it's to, you know, sort of get that to start off on the right foot. But to extend that to all of Randwick seems a bit, you know, sort of arbitrary. You know, sort of without, you know, sort of having any kind of analysis of, you know, sort of whether it's a problem or not, you know, sort of in that, in that area. So, yeah, I'm not sure about this either.
Uh, councillor Hamilton.
Uh, I commend this general manager's report because I received an email from a resident who supplied a lot of photo evidence of the very unfortunate incident that was happening right outside their window. And unfortunately, alcohol-free zone seemed, I think, highly appropriate for Waratah Avenue. And all councillor Hayes asking that an investigation be done. Something that we do quite regularly around Randwick when we're thinking about how better to manage antisocial behaviour. I know the police are very supportive of the council when they undertake investigations into particular areas that have seen or may have frequent people who are, you know, making a nuisance of themselves to the residents who live directly on the borders of those areas. So I think this is completely reasonable and I'm really happy to say that I've visited Waratah Avenue, the Waratah little mall there today. My dog liked the area as well. I promise I picked up. But it's a really nice little zone. There's some people frequenting it. There were some people, you know, having something to eat. There were some people sitting around all the different furniture. So it's a great addition to our neighbourhood.
If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour, those against, I declare that carried. We now move to CP seven slash twenty four Compliance and Enforcement Policy, moved by councillor Chapel. Challenged by councillor Chapel.
Just moving as per the business paper, I just had a kind of question. Do we need a seconder?
Uh, yeah. Uh, yes, seconded by councillor Sed. Councillor Chapel, what was your question? Yeah, councillor Sed, yeah.
Just through you, Madam Mayor, to the relevant officer. I've had a number of residents contact me about boat parking and kind of not knowing the appropriate channels to go through. I know this policy updates our policies in relation to that after state government changes. And I was wondering whether we had any or could do any comms around how residents could raise issues specifically around boat parking and around e-bike parking, because I think those are the big two pain points for our community at the moment.
Through to the relevant officer. Mr Kiri Kiriaki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, certainly as part of the consultation associated with this draft policy, we can sort of emphasise those aspects of this enforcement policy in relation to boats and other untended vehicles.
Um, sorry, councillor Sed is the seconder. Did you wish to speak? Uh, councillor Olive.
I just wanted to make a comment that I wish that I had this earlier in, you know, sort of in my term. I didn't realise that this was here and maybe, you know, someone told me and, you know, so I didn't take any notice, that's quite possible. But it's, it's, reading it, it's a great tool for councillors to understand, you know, sort of where they stand in terms of, you know, sort of regulation and, you know, sort of, and regulatory matters. And I would like, you know, sort of when new councillor comes on board and there are new councillors, that this to be introduced to them early in the piece. And also, you know, sort of to, it's got here a summary of regulatory matters and typical enforcement options. I think that could be extended to, to more examples as well, you know, sort of there are hoarding and health and a whole range of other things that, you know, so this could help to give, you know, sort of guidance to for councillors and, and sort of staff as well, but to know, you know, what to say to residents when they ask you invariable questions. So that was just a comment that I wanted to make on this.
If there are no other speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to CP eight slash twenty four Planning Agreements Policy, twenty twenty four Post-Exhibition Report, challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you. Look, at this point, I'm moving as per the recommendation on the business paper. I just have a question through to the director of city planning. And I'm just curious, and I apologise, I haven't given you the heads up, just your thoughts on the merits of council specifying in its negotiating position, a preference for in-kind affordable housing contributions as opposed to monetary ones? Whether or not that's something which is, is one, even feasible, and two, the pros and cons of council taking such an approach?
Uh, through to Mr Kiriaki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the option is really based on the nature of the development that is contributing the contribution. For example, if it's a residential flat building or shopped up housing that is creating the apartments and having them as part of the development ready for sale. It's advantageous to council to then require them as a dedicated dwelling to be provided because council then has the asset. And in comparison to a development where there isn't the ability to provide dedicated housing such as co-living and other types of development, you would then only be in a position to obtain the affordable housing contribution, which is the monetary contribution. And then council would need to then determine how it utilises that funding, either for purchasing or investing. So, you know, it's, it's something that is really dependent on the circumstances of each particular development and council's strategy going forward in relation to how to invest some monetary contributions to create more additional affordable housing.
Thank you. I just have one follow-up, Mr Kiri. I do genuinely apologise for doing this on the fly. If council were to specify that council were to, where possible, prioritise the dedication of in-kind as opposed to monetary contributions. Do you believe that that would in any way fetter your ability to, to proactively negotiate in seeking an outcome of more affordable housing overall?
Uh, through to Mr Kiriaki.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. No, it wouldn't necessarily further the discretion. You just have to bear in mind that some developments would not be in a position to provide dedicated affordable housing as part of the development. If council was in the future to levy other forms of development, as in a citywide levy for affordable housing contributions, that would apply to all of our developments. So it would not necessarily be linked to the creation of, of new dwellings.
Councillor Parker.
Thank you. Look, in light of that advice, I'd just like to move this in a slightly amended fashion. It's an addition of a point D, and I will just read it out very slowly for Mr Kelly, I apologise. It would simply say that where possible, council in negotiations prioritise the provision of in-kind affordable housing over monetary contributions and that consequential amendments be made to the policy to give effect to this intent.
Could I just, sure, but could I just actually first, yeah, councillor Nelson, if you could just wait for one moment? I'll just ask councillor Parker to repeat the amendment.
Okay, sorry, my apologies. That where possible, council in its negotiations prioritise the provision of in-kind affordable ha-
Sorry, I was catching up.
Prioritise the provision of in-kind affordable housing over monetary contributions. Full stop. And that, that consequential amendments are made to the policy to give effect to this intent. Thank, thank you, councillors. I am moving it in this particular way, just for the benefit of everyone. Because I do acknowledge that this is without notice. I, I'm operating on the advice of the director of city planning. If there are any objections whatsoever to that, I would love to hear them, but I think it's just a reasonable inclusion. If there are any strong objections from anyone, I'd have.
Councillor Hamilton is the seconder. Are you happy to second this?
I am.
Thank you. May I, I'll go to the question from councillor Nelson and then to councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to the department of, to the head of planning by you, thank you, Madam Mayor, is that I'm just asking, Mr Kiriaki, is it possible for council, is it possible for council to make amendments to this particular policy? If we were to pass it as per the business paper now, would we be able at a later date to make an amendment like this?
Through to Mr Kiriaki.
Or any other sort of amendment, put it down the track and if so, when?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The policy has been on exhibition as now with council for adoption. So any amendments should really be done at this meeting. There will always review periods in terms of these policies. And should there be any changes to the council policies that may affect this particular one or state, you know, or other state policies or regulations or acts that would all impact it, there may be opportunity to amend it at that stage.
Follow-up question?
Are you aware of another council that's got this sort of position in its planning agreement policy?
Uh, through to Mr Kiriaki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If it's in relation specifically to affordable housing and provisions, I'm not aware of the details of each, most councils do have a planning agreements policy. And I can't comment as to what the particular preferences are in relation to other affordable housing being provided through, through the asset or through monetary contributions.
I'll now go to councillor Hamilton as the seconder.
Um, I would just like to say that I fully support the amendment, given the responses from the relevant director and also, excuse me, the points that councillor Nelson made, that we do have the ability to review things in the future. I think that for now, this is a smart way ahead.
Um, so I was going to go to councillor Olive.
Can I just clarify, because I think it might just do something, just for the benefit of the meeting, I'd be happy to include the words after where possible in its, so after the words where possible, for point D to read, where possible and in the view of the offices appropriate, in its negotiations prioritise the provision of in-kind affordable housing. The reason why I've put that there is essentially, it's to still provide them the discretion in order to make an assessment as to an application and, sorry, not an application, in circumstances where there is a negotiation. They may think it may be appropriate to go in a different route, that the discretion is there in order to go by that. But as a general principle, there is a preference for in-kind affordable housing as opposed to a monetary contribution. Does that, does that assist the debate?
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, are you happy? Okay, thank you. Councillor Olive.
I mean, I, maybe this is a redundant question. I mean, I'm totally in agreement with this amendment. But I always thought that was kind of council's policy anyway. Is that correct to the, the relevant officer? We've been kind of doing that anyway.
Through to Mr Kiriaki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that's certainly been the practice over many years. And it's only really been in recent times where we've had the introduction of the K to K affordable housing scheme, which has levied across all types of development, that has meant that some developers that aren't providing apartments for, for sale are able to provide monetary contributions.
If there are no further speakers, I will put it. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to CP nine slash twenty four Discussion Paper on Short and Long-Term Rental Accommodation, challenged by councillor Parker. Seconded by councillor Chapel.
Thank you. I moved a recommendation on the business paper and I would just like to commend the staff for their ongoing work in this particular space. Randwick has been, I have to say, one of the more forward-thinking councils in relation to this. And I have to say, as a Sydney council, I am quite proud that we are advocating this considering the absolute housing crisis which is impacting almost all elements of our society. And, and the fact that this is, remains an ongoing subject of council's attention. The fact that seven point seven percent of all Airbnbs are located within, located in Sydney Metro are in the Randwick LGA is quite a shocking statistic in my mind. And I think for council to be advocating in this space is, is very important and as I think most of the community would expect. So I commend the report and thank, thank the council staff for being so, dare I say the word, progressive in this space.
Um, seconded by councillor Chapel.
I echo the comments of my colleague. I just also want to say I really appreciate how council staff have recognised the importance of this for our area and that what may be appropriate for the rest of the state isn't necessarily going to be appropriate here because, you know, the amount of return that you could get air being a property, property just over the few months of the summer is so significant that it could mean it gets taken out of the market the whole year, even if it's not able to be used for the rest of the year. And I think the amendments suggested by council staff are completely spotted and I really appreciate their time.
Thank you. Councillor Dusutha, did you wish to speak? There are councillor Rosenfeld.
I've just got a question because with, just regard to the exemption of the twenty-one day consecutive booking provision. It says in the, in the business paper that that leads to a loophole where people can then rent out on short-term rental, three sixty-five days a year. I'm just not getting how that, that, where that loophole comes in.
Uh, through to Mr Kiriaki.
Um, so what it does, thank you, Madam Mayor, so what it does in effect, if you have a continuous twenty-one day cycle where your property is still being let out as Airbnb, it doesn't get counted in the hundred and eighty days. So that's, that's how that operates.
But is that a continual twenty-one days or is that just basically a twenty-one day period? Consecutive days before there's then a gap before the next rental? But can, with the twenty-one days, that exemption, that can be. But but can, with the twenty-one days, that exemption, that that can be twenty-one plus twenty-one plus twenty-one, is that correct?
Uh through to Mister Kiriaku.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor, yes, that's correct.
Uh if there is no further discussion, I will put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to CP eleven slash twenty-four Bundock Street Defence Housing redevelopment challenged by councillor Olive.
Uh, yes, I, I'd just like to put a um an amendment uh to um to the recommendation. Uh apart, uh Mister Kelly could bring bring that up. Um, this goes to uh just adding something on page one eighty, there's a recommendation down the bottom. Under biodiversity and environment, and it's adding another paragraph and you will see there, um. Uh, it it starts off with council, I I added some bits to make it clear, but um. That uh council also notes that appendix C, that's where, that's where it starts. Now, um a- along uh Bundock Street on uh the um defence land there. There are um uh Defence Housing Australia are pr- proposing to build sixty-two uh dwellings there. In the process of getting permission for that, they have to um. Uh write a submission to uh the Department of Climate Change, Energy, Environment and Water. So, um the uh bread and butter issue uh of of that particular department is biodiversity, although there are other aspects to this. Um, I I just want to uh ask for clarity on a particular issue. Um what's going to be sent to um DQ as it's called, will be a a referral and and. A document which is outlined in this uh submission letter that council is going to send to. Uh to uh DQ at the same time, uh the the uh document is um the biodiversity impact assessment. That uh assessment has appendices A to E. And as it says there, in um appendix E, it uh it indicates. That there was a field study done over two days and um grey-headed flying fox. Was observed during this time, now, why is that important? That's uh important because it's a a um a a significant species under the um. Under the um uh Environmental Protection and Bi- Biodiversity Conservation Act. And that's what this this is all about, um now, why is it also important? It's because uh they, in that particular document, while they have uh uh indicated that. There was an observation of this, in the uh in the main body document and also in the referral document. They say that they they make a highlight of the fact that there have been no grey uh fly, no grey-headed flying foxes sighted on. On this land, um now, I'll read from, you know, sort of the um. I'll I'll read, you know, sort of a line from um uh from appendix E here. Uh from, you know, sort of the the two Jacobs ecologists that did the study. Uh while MNES uh were not that, so that's, you know, sort of matters of nation- national environmental significance. Were not the objective of this fauna survey, it is worth noting that of those individuals identified. One was a threatened species, the grey-headed flying fox, a vulnerable species under both the New South Wales B C Act. And the E P B C Act, however, when we go to the um biodiversity impact assessment. Which is going to be forwarded to D- forwarded to DQ and the actual referral. They say, you know, sort of, we're talking about the grey-headed flying fox, I could read the whole paragraph, but I won't. However, individuals of these species have not been recorded on site, and so they make that point uh a couple of times. And I'm just um uh uh trying to put in this amendment, a line which says council requests this apparent contradiction be clarified. And so highlighting and noting that particular, that particular matter, um and forwarding that to DQ.
Um councillor Olive, could I just clarify that the minutes that are up on the screen are correct? That we start from not withstanding the findings, or did you want to start from council also notes?
I I, the actual amendment that I am making.
So that first little bit after, yes, so the beginning is council also notes, we delete that part above that. Do you wish to leave those other notes somewhere? So should we wa- uh take the word recommendation and put that above point A as the whole thing is the recommendation? Recommendation above point A, is that correct? Because we're doing the whole thing. Councillor Olive, I just believe we have to move a recommendation, so I don't know if we can move something that's not the recommendation. So. Okay, okay, so councillor Nielsen, are you happy to second that?
I was going to suggest that um maybe um councillor Olive and I'm the second, we could just um meet together when we have a break. And come back to this matter and then um have it typed up um correctly as moved, I'm sure there'll be no. Problem and no misunderstanding, but just to save some time, I think it'd be better just for us to defer it until the break and then we'll come back with it.
Do you wish to move a procedural motion?
Yeah, it is a procedural motion to use correct terminology, thank you.
Uh do you have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Olive, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Um we'll now move to CP twelve slash twenty-four Coogee Bay Hotel DA. Four three seven slash twenty twenty-one challenged by councillor Olive.
I I need to declare a conflict, um I um, before I was on council. I did put a submission to the planning panel regarding this uh development application. I believe it's a a non-financial, n- non-substantial, non uh financial pecuni- non-pecuniary interest. And I will be voting on this, and I'm hoping to second the motion that my, the amendment that councillor Olive is putting up.
Um so, moved by councillor Olive, seconded by councillor Wilson, councillor Olive.
Yeah, so, um, uh Mister Kelly, there's a, the um, the motion, uh I'd like to put it up there. Um, uh we've, we've asked in this uh this recommendation whether we want to put a submission. And I think uh that it's uh important that council put a uh submission into the uh, the Sydney Eastern City Planning Panel. Um, we know that uh there are not, the the proposal for the Coogee Bay Hotel. Is non-compliant in terms of height, non-compliant in terms of bulk, non-compliant in terms of the amount of community space. Non-compliant in about, in terms of um uh the amount of, the amount of deep soil. It has issues that we can all see in terms of traffic in particular. If there are, you know, sort of a hundred and uh uh sixty-odd parking spaces, there are fifty-eight. You know, sort of uh uh residencies, there are um, there are shops and businesses, there are hotel accommodation. Come all coming in and out, you know, vehicles coming in and out of the driveway onto Arden Street. That's going to create particular, particular problems, um um gridle, uh could create, you know, sort of uh tra- all sorts of traffic problems. Over, over time, I think that there are issues related to affordable housing as um Rona Wade pointed out. That there are people being, uh will have to move out of this uh um uh existing, existing accommodation. And they they have um, they have, you know, sort of low-cost housing. And where will they, where will they find how, where will they find any other accommodation? There are issues of view loss, there are issues of overshadowing, um and these are things that um. Uh council has to look at, however, this um uh particular uh um proposal. Has a history and it has uh gone to the planning panel, it has gone to the envi- uh Land and Environment Court. It's back back at the the planning panel, and um last time I I heard uh talk of the planning panel. There there's a chance that this will go ahead in some form, but, you know, sort of, um, so, um. I'm, well, we guided by council, but it seems to me that, you know, sort of, it would be good for us to make some proposals, you know, sort of, uh. Here, you know, sort of, as to, you know, sort of what we, what form uh this might take, the submission and recommendations might take. Um so I just um have put up point B here, which is to reduce the um floors level by one floor. On the south western corner and the the northwestern corner. Um that reduces floor, reduces floor space, it it will improve views, will will improve, you know, sort of, um. Uh overshadowing in terms of community space, it's all relative to um the amount of floor space, you know, sort of the community space. So in a statistical sense, that will increase that, and it will increase in the same way the amount of um uh deep soil. I also, in point C, uh as uh Rona Wade pointed out, there's a intention to um. Uh build a southern hotel wing which will come right out to the footpath. Um what that will do, will that, that will um uh uh adjust the view to the um. To the heritage of the Coog- Coogee Bay Hotel, it will also sh- uh cause um significant shadowing. To the buildings in two thirty Arden, Arden Street, um and it will remove the Washington Palms. So, um as a suggestion, this could, uh there could be setback of this building. To be um pushed further away from the road significantly so that the drive into um this development. Is like a bit of a chicane around the um Washington Palms and in, and you've got enough space there. Um to, so that there's not uh um overshadowing of those uh, those dwellings just, just nearby. As far as affordable housing is concerned, D and E go to that, where, you know, sort of, um, there should be a plan. Uh for uh residents to uh be relocated in um affordable accommodation, local affordable accommodation. And also um the presi- provision of some of the one-bedroom units for affordable housing. So I put this forward as um as a motion.
Thank you councillor, is there a seconder? Uh councillor Wilson, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I I rise to commend this motion, um we understand that council isn't the decision-maker in this particular. Uh development application and that the Eastern City Planning Panel is. Uh but I think it's important that council makes a submission in in the strongest terms possible, reflecting the uh. The uh submissions and concerns of the uh, of the local residents, because that's our job in this particular circumstance.
Councillor Hamilton.
I just have a couple of questions, my first question is, uh if council has asked. Other property owners to re-house tenants when submitting applications.
Uh through to Mister Kiri- Kiriaku, Kiri- Kiriaku.
Um, thank you, madam mayor, um when there is a a situation where there will be a loss of low rental um accommodation. Under the state policy, there is a contribution that um gets paid to, back to council um to offset that loss. Um and it is also something that we try and impose conditions um. To to require assistance to be provided to the tenants to and seek that um the developer. Assistant finding a comparable alternative uh accommodation.
Question, that's right, thank you very much for that, and my other question is just in relation to E. Do we know if we have already asked for one-bedroom units to be um made available for affordable housing?
Through to Mister Kiriaku.
Thank you, madam mayor, um affordable housing contributions are applicable um to this site, so it's not within council. It does, there is no current affordable housing plan for um this particular site. Um, uh it would have to be dealt with through a a planning agreement, through a letter of offer. Um and I note in terms of the overall FSR of the site where it's approximately five percent over the uh floor space ratio at the moment. Um I I don't believe that the applicant would entertain um the provision of additional affordable housing provided on the site. But that is a matter for council to make its um request and a submission um as it sees fit.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour? Against, um I declare that carried.
Can you say unanimously please, madam mayor?
Yep. We now move to CS six slash twenty-four Hefron Park Criterion Track upgrade proposal challenged by councillor Parker.
Um, I move the recommendation on the business paper and I'd just like to thank council staff for their ongoing work in relation to this. Um I I do know that the uh relevant cycling clubs are very appreciative of, um. Yeah, that's fine. For the benefit of those waiting, I'm just waiting for the gallery, those watching online, I'm just waiting for the gallery to empty. That is true. Those listening online. Um a- anyway, back to the topic at hand, I'd just like to commend the staff for their ongoing work in relation to this. I do know um that the relevant clubs that regularly use um the track are are very appreciative. Uh and not only that, they have only been complimentary of working with council staff i- in regards to this. Uh and uh for that, I'd just like to, on behalf of at least my- myself, but I'm sure there are other councillors who would share that view. Uh just express thanks for the way in which council staff have uh engaged um with the the relevant sporting groups in regards to this, it really. Um puts us in in quite high esteem.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I fully support and uh thank the council staff for this, um and definitely fully agree with stage one and especially stage two. Because I do uh walk my dog in the park and and I I walk the external circuit and I do see that area is is particularly uh bumpy. And uh I see cyclists kind of bump along a little bit when I go past there, so that's very much needed. And that's stage one especially because that's where they're starting and finishing and uh uh it's 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 a great spot for for an upgrade. Uh I I know it'd be ideal to do all, but you know, money is is uh, uh is a question which we fully understand. And uh it'll be great, great for the uh for the sporting clubs and and um Sunday mornings, I'm, you know, I'm often seeing their enjoyment using the track. Whether it be just cycling or doing the whole triathlon, so, well done.
Councillor Sid.
Thank you, madam mayor, I've just got two questions, in um stage five, part of the master plan was where the loop is. Um, there was going to be eventually, um could either be a soccer field or there was going to be a field of some type in there. Is that still, it's not showing here because I know this is about the criterion, but is there a possibility something still goes in there?
Through to Mister Clark.
Thank you, madam mayor, uh that's correct, the master plan does indicate a non-standard size um field of some sort to be considered. Um the bike track in its entirety. Um, the bike track in its entirety is considered of the master plan, but there's no uh design work yet in regards to stage five nor the potential field.
And my uh second question is, considering that to do the criterion really well and we're putting a lot of money into it, um along some sections there already is a fence, so I'm just wondering, because I've been asked, is there a possibility? And I don't want to do this as an amendment, I just need to know if it ever could happen. I've been asked by residents whether that, where the um, the natural sandpit type part is, and nothing much happens there, that if we could eventually build a fence and make that an off-leash dog park in the future, could that ever be part of the plan?
I'll through to Mr. Clark.
They do now, but there's no fence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, ultimately, it would be a matter for, for council to consider. Um, I do know that, that uh particular activity is not um noted in the current plan and management for the site.
If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move on to CS seven slash twenty four, South Maruba Boardwalk Extension and Gate. Uh, challenged by Councillor Chapel, uh seconded by Councillor Sed.
Thank you, I just want to um move it as per the business paper, um and I just want to speak in favour of this and um just reflect on the number of times frustration with the lack of this path was expressed to me over the most recent weekend at Nippers. Um, including by my own daughter, who had to go along the path and then down the hill and then across and then be pushed up the hill, because her little legs can't get up the hill, so um there's a lot of excitement in the community about this. Um, I suppose the only question I have about the plan is the location of the proposed bike racks, um which are down towards the new toilets, and I think um considering a lot, like that will satisfy a lot of the users who are going to have picnics in the park and, you know, will be near those toilets, et cetera. But the, having them that far away from visibility from the surf club, I think, will be a problem for those who are going down to Nippers and stuff like that, which I think is a large number of users. I do have some photos it took from the weekend of us chaining our bikes up to the um uh wooden fence, there are lots of other people doing the same, so I wonder if we could also have consideration, I, I know those things aren't expensive. Um, or if we even would get permission to pop one out somewhere near the showers, near the um, near the surf club.
Is it, sorry, was that a comment or a question? Uh, through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um, through consultation with the club uh and in relation to the operational activities largely uh to do with Nippers, the location of the bike racks was seen as the, the, the best um solution. Um, but bike racks um has the potential to be further considered in the future.
Uh, Councillor Sed is the second, uh, do you wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, and I'd just like to commend the uh, the, this, because I do think it's been a long time coming, I just want to make sure that I have read that there will be some way of signage, but I'm just wondering, we- where it, right at the end, um, there's gonna be a sign, or it's got a possible ballad. What I was gonna say was, there's gotta be something to slow down people coming off the, because there is a driveway there, so there's planning, I just read that, the ballad, I, I read signage, I thought a signage wasn't enough, thank you.
Uh, Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I have to say, um as a, a, an eternal cynic, uh occasionally I am positively surprised, I never actually thought I would see a, a, a plan uh before Randwick Council to actually uh complete this section of the walkway. Uh, and I commend all those involved in it, um I look forward to walking across it, uh and I am pleasantly surprised.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I, I too am very uh pleased to see this and um I've always wondered for many years why um this, the path all of a sudden turns into sand. Well, I, I, I've found out since I've become a councillor, but um at least people can uh, are able to experience um the wonders uh south of where the path ends now, uh and uh, and what it has to offer down there, without having to go into Arthurburn Reserves, so fully commended.
Uh, Councillor Chapel, did you wish to close the debate? If there's no other speakers, I will put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move on to CS eight slash twenty four, Naming Randwick's Roads, Reserves and Facility po- po- Facilities Policy, challenged by Councillor Sed. Uh, seconded by Councillor Burst, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, before I, I say we, I recommend this as per the business paper, I do have one question uh to the relevant officer, that on page one fifty six, the policy virtually is in uh adopts just about everything in the geographical names board of New South Wales policy. Except on page one fifty six, our policy will say, uh, four terms, when it comes to council and naming something, our policy says four terms or more, whereas the policy in New South Wales Government is two terms or more, and I'm just wondering why it's different to the New South Wales policy, whereas the other two, the twenty or more years of association and twenty more years of association of a state government to uh an organisation or a local community group, is exactly the same, yet that one's been changed.
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um, in addition to the um geographical names board policy, we also looked at um policies of, of other councils in, in, in that regard. Um, not every council does have a naming policy, but those that did, um, we, we just thought to keep it um considerate uh of, of, of other uh industry, industry practice.
Councillor Sed.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move it with a slight amendment, that uh, that the policy, I'm trying to find that page. Our policy, where it states, can't find the actual start, sorry, apologies. Yeah, page one three nine, four or more terms of office or local government, and this is after someone's deceased for a year, by the way. Um, changed to, to be exactly the same as the state policy and changed the four to a two on both sides to the, as facilities and roads and reserves.
Councillor Burst, are you happy to accept that?
Yes, I accept.
Do you wish to speak as the second?
I reserve the right.
Um, councillor, I think I had a hand from councillor Chapel before, no, councillor Nelson.
I have a question in relation to um who can be nominated and so on, and I'm just wondering whether um where we say action by an individual to protect, restore, enhance or maintain an area that produces substantial long-term improvement for our community um is reason for consideration. Would that mean that uh then that would negate the need for twenty or more years of association? Because um I think we all know that there are a lot of people who might have ten, fifteen or so many years of association with something, but um would this fourth category, the action, um allow people who might um won't have their time criteria, but they might have every other criteria uh relevant, would that uh be enough to negate the need for the twenty or more years?
Through to Mr. Clark, go, through to the general manager, um, Mr. Clark.
Apologies, through you, Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Uh, councillor Pendlefinney.
Um, to, through to the um relevant officer, I just wondered if there's any specific consideration given to um including women from the community. I ha- I have asked before whether we have a tally or anything like that, and I would hesitate to guess that there isn't as many um things named after women in the area, so I just wondered if there's any special consideration to ensure that we have balance.
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through you, uh, Madam Mayor. Um, whilst I'm not aware, um councillor Pendlefinney of a um tally as such, that policy um covers um all um genders, ultimately every um recommendation would go to council first for consideration um of each name in, in individual right.
Uh, councillor Parker.
Um, I, I believe I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify if possible. Um, the adoption of a policy, um, it would not prevent council by express resolution departing from said policy under um particular circumstances, which we ourselves as a body found extraordinary.
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's correct councillors. Uh, this just gives the council office an opportunity to put some principles and protocols around it. Uh, there's nothing stopping the coun- the future council changing that.
In light of that advice, I'm fine.
Uh, councillor Chapel.
Look, I'm not going to oppose, but I do think, assuming everybody who does two terms on local government needs a park named after them, is a little self-indulgent. Um, and I would prefer, we had left it at four terms and then, you know, if there was something, no, you don't have to die first. No, it's or, it's or, they don't all have to be dead, so it's or. No, but it's not deceased for one year, or four or more terms, or twenty or more, you don't have to do all of those things, because I think that might be physically not possible, yeah. Um, anyway, I just don't think it's self-indulgent, I mean, I have read through, you know, because of who I am, the list of all of the street names in our area, and there are so many street names and parks and things named after people who have been on council for short times, many, many years ago, that I just think don't necessarily has, have as much relevance to the local community as maybe, you know, recognising people who've made um contributions in other areas as well, like it's very easy, we're, our names are already on plaques, our names are already on the register for council, we're already in, you know, have that recognition, I think there's a lot of other people who don't get that recognition. Um, and I'd love if we could prioritise them.
Councillor Pendlefinney.
Do you think if we can add in um an amendment to um say that we have a consideration of gender balance for naming in this um LDA?
Uh, councillor Sed, would you be happy to accept that amendment?
See, I can't accept it, only because there's no mention of gender specific. We've just discussed it and it's based on the council resolution, if the council decides it's a woman or a man or whoever, it's gonna go through, there's no need to do that, we're very, we're majority women, I counsel, so. But that's why we're principled people, we don't need to be told that we need to do this, that, that's my consideration, I just think we'd do it on a fair and basis, and I think everyone in this room would do it in a fair and basis way. And we don't need to be told that we need to do it in a gender-specific way.
Councillor Pendlefinney, are you moving the, are you, do you wish to move the amendment? No, okay. Councillor Sed, do you wish to close the debate? Do you wanna, no, okay, if there's no further discussion, I will put it, or all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Okay, we now move to CS nine slash twenty four, Fig Three Removal Nine Woodland Street, Kujie, challenged by councillor Chapel.
Thank you, look, very happy to move this per the business paper, I just had a question.
Uh, what was your question, councillor Chapel?
I, I suppose it's a question we all have, like, do we know who poisoned this bloody tree? Because I can't see any potential benefit to anyone on the street, like, do we have a current investigation um into that? Um, or is that just something we can't, so like, have we contacted all the residents to notify them about it? Okay, but anyway, question through the relevant officer, because, you know, and, and if we did know who it was, would there be a penalty that would be applicable?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um, through the time between two thousand twenty two and becoming known of the um, the, the holes, uh essentially in two thousand twenty four, we, we haven't been able to identify um the cause, other than they are drill holes, um but should uh with an investigation, um in general with, with, with tree vandalism, um, it's something that we are um taking seriously and there would definitely be um prosecution or proposed prosecution, should we uh identify a culprit.
Councillor Hamilton is the second, uh, do you wish to speak?
I reserve my right.
Councillor Olive.
Uh, I just had a quick question to the relevant officer along the, the lines there, um were any other trees damaged or is there any other evidence of, you know, sort of poisoning of other trees in the street at all? Or is that all been checked out and it's okay?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor, not that I'm aware of.
There are any other speakers? Councillor Chapel, do you wish to close? Um, in that case, I'll put it, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to CS ten slash twenty four, Snake Park Indoor Sporting Facility and Amenities Upgrade, challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you, I'm, I move through recommendation.
Councillor Chapel had her hand up.
I move the recommendation on the business paper, and I actually just have a question through the, through the director of cities, actually I have two questions. The director of city services, the first of them is, could you please outline the consultation with the impacted clubs and just confirming their positions as it relates to the recommendation on the business paper?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Through yourself, um, Madam Mayor, so the consultation to date with the stakeholders has been in relation to development of the scope of the, the project. Um, the, the staging of the, of the project and breaking the scope um as identified by the stakeholders down into two stages um is yet to go to the um, the, the stakeholders, but essentially, delivery of the, the project in one stage would delay the project um significantly.
Um, the follow-up would be, do we anticipate that there will be any consternation as to the ordering of the stages amongst the two stakeholders present on the site?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Sorry, through yourself, Madam Mayor, could you just clarify?
Do we believe that both stakeholders will be happy with the ordering uh of the recommendation on the business paper?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Um, through yourselves, Madam Mayor, um, I, I would not at this stage preempt the um I suppose the satisfaction of the, of the stakeholders, but I would say is the, the indoor cricket facility as it's termed is not just for cricket. I, I do understand the, the context of the word, however, the, the, that particular indoor facility is for the rugby league um during winter and cricket during summer, it just has a, a big, large room with retractable nets. Um, it's, would be impossible to start the, the, the scope in relation to the indoor amenities until we resolve the underground ball water line, which sort of renders the decision um to, to start the, the indoor cricket first.
Um, my next follow-up question is, is there any particular time concern as to why this should be decided tonight, as opposed to a later date?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Through yourself, uh, Madam Mayor, we are in the process of finalising the grant timelines with um the uh grant body. Um, regardless of whether it was uh the left or the right of the project, so to speak, we do need to commence works um ultimately in the next year, um and to do so, we are looking to stage the, the project.
Okay, and just for one last question, the confirmation is, um, i- it's the view of council that taking this uh staged approach uh won't in any way jeopardise the grant funding, is that correct?
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, I'm happy to move it as per the business, business paper.
Uh, councillor Chapel is the second.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to ask if we had some stats on female participation in this and whether there are any targets on that? Because I noticed we're trying to make all of these facilities gender neutral, uh which is great and I love it, um but I'd love to make sure that we're doing that so that women can also access them.
Through to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um, whilst I don't have the um, the statistics at hand, I can take the question on notice, we have um most definitely been in discussion with both stakeholders in being rugby league and cricket in relation, relation to women's participation in sport. Um, we are shortly, just as a, as a further to that, shortly to come back to council um in relation to the resolutions previously um decided in relation to the increased women's participation in sport and the actions um that will fall into a, a project like this from, from that.
Um, I had a hand up before from councillor Rosenfeld, no, uh councillor Hay.
Thanks, I just uh sent through a amendment to Mr. Kelly just now. Uh, there's a reference to a kiosk um near the top of page two oh three. Uh, it doesn't actually go into any details in regards to what's it going to be. Uh, I, I just like to, the, add a point D that requests that when uh the uh draft concept designs come back, that rather than just being a mere kiosk, it'd be a full service canteen, which could have a hot water connection so they can sell coffee, uh potentially deep fryer for hot chips, I know that's been a uh passion of some councillors, and, uh, also things like a grill and just so they, they can have a variety of food options, but to consult the community on what they want regarding the, uh, whether it's going to be a small little kiosk or a proper full service canteen.
Um councillor Parker, do you accept the amendment?
Uh, my position will be contingent on advice from the director of city services as to whether or not the intention to do so is already contained in the existing work that's been undertaken today.
Uh through to Mr Clark.
Through yourself, Madam Mayor, the concept design will be considered of the request um of the clubs or the stakeholders on site as to what they believe they can operate and fit within the, uh, project design, um the word kiosk, I, I would say, um, is considered of some of, of those elements, however, we wouldn't um install a provision that the clubs wouldn't be able to sustain for the community.
Um one follow up, Mr Clark, would you be willing to ask the clubs at the relevant stage whether or not that was something which they'd be willing to do? Or wel- willing to incorporate, not putting it, but is that something that they actually want?
Sorry, through to Mr Clark.
Sorry, through yourself, Madam Mayor, um most definitely, we, as we now move through concept design, the clubs will be heavily involved in the progression. Um and as, when we come back to council with the next report seeking further progression, we'll have inside that report that the clubs are satisfied to date with the design that's on council's, uh, desk.
Uh, thank you, in light of that advice, I do not accept the amendment, um, the reason why I don't accept it is I don't believe it's necessary, I believe that a- as a first principle, if we're building a facility, um for particular users, we should ask them what they would like to see, rather than being, um, prescriptive of it. Uh and I believe that, that that, that work will, um, occur anyway, uh in light of the advice provided by the director of city services, so I do not accept the amendment.
Thank you, do you wish to move your amendment?
I'll draw the amendment, thank you.
You'll withdraw it, okay. Uh are there any further speakers? Councillor Parker, do you wish to close? In that case, I'll put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move on to C C one slash twenty four, oral history project, recording Lapa's elders, challenged by councillor Pendlefinney.
I just wanted to like to, I'd like to move it as per the business paper.
Yeah, uh councillor De Souza, yes, would you like to speak as the second up?
My friends, when we acknowledge country, we always end with power respects to elders both past and present. Now, what greater way can we pay our respects to elders? Than to listen to their stories, to acknowledge their contributions, and for them to help us build a better Australia. In the Telegraph not so long ago, when there was a debate about Captain Cook, I said, we can't change history, but we can learn from history. And that's then opportunity to learn from our elders. When they tell us their stories, we can learn and we can benefit from their experiences. The other thing I said to the Telegraph and they quoted me was truth telling will lead to healing and reconciliation. Another opportunity our elders are giving us, when they tell us of what they've been through or what their expectations are or were, and if they've been fulfilled. Truth telling does lead to healing and it'll lead to reconciliation. So I fully support this, because I think this is an investment in our own future. Thank you, Madam.
Well, thank you councillor De Souza, were there any further speakers? Um councillor Pendlefinney, did you wish to close?
No, thanks.
In that case, I'll put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to C C three slash twenty four, elimination of Randwick Town Hall policy, challenged by councillor Olive.
The, uh, the motion is, um. Yeah, uh, Mr Kelly, put the mo- the motion up, um, uh. The community and, um, uh have made a request on, on, uh, on various occasions to, um, to try to, uh, illuminate the town hall uh with their colours in celebration of a, an event or an occurrence and, uh, and I mean, the examples are given here of occasions where that, that's been done in terms of the South Sydney Rabidows here, um and marking, you know, sort of, uh terrorist attack in Nice, um, uh, these kind of occasions, you know, sort of, uh, uh call for rea- uh for, you know, sort of, uh, or give a reason why, um, that our town hall uh can, you know, sort of be partake and be, um, included in, um, the events, uh, um, being, you know, sort of, um, uh requested by particular community groups. Um we have here, you know, sort of a proposal to have a, an illumination of Randwick Town Hall policy. But, you know, sort of, I, I think that, you know, sort of in that proposal, it takes away the responsibility of, um, decision making from councillors and, you know, sort of, uh this proposal, you know, sort of, um, puts that back um in the, in the hands of, of councillors. I think, you know, sort of, the, the, um, the request to actually uh illuminate the town hall can come from two different particular directions. One is from, from the community in some kind of application process, which is, um, uh, which is, um, uh discussed in the, the draft policy there. The other is that councillors can actually bring it directly to council and ask that, you know, sort of, the, the council be illuminated and, um, the, the, uh, council as a group can decide whether that's, um, a re- a reasonable um request and pass a motion, a motion accordingly. Um so, uh, given that I think that, you know, sort of, uh, councillors should be responsible for uh decision making around this, I am suggesting that, you know, sort of, the, um, the policy, town hall illumination policy be redrafted and, uh, to assess um, uh, applications for, um, illuminating the town hall from, uh, community groups. We have a committee of councillors, uh, this is a suggestion, one being the mayor, one green, one labour, one liberal, and the general manager or a delegate, um, uh, recommend project for illumination through, uh, through this, uh, through this particular process, and then hand that on to council, and then all requests be subject to council approval. So that's, that, that one, one particular, um, method of, uh, assessing, you know, sort of, um, whether, you know, sort of, we should have uh the town hall illuminated in a particular way. Um and I'm suggesting also that maybe there'd be, um, uh, six requests um forwarded to council and, and approved. That gives, you know, sort of, uh, that means that it doesn't squeeze out any opportunity for councillors themselves to put up, um, uh, a motion to illuminate the town hall. Um it wouldn't squeeze them out anyway, but it might go the other way, that, you know, sort of, we might have a situation where um we have, uh, accepted, you know, sort of, a, a, a community group's rationale for illuminating the town hall, um, uh, uh but something comes up that councillors wish to, you know, sort of, uh, uh, or perceive as a, a greater priority, and then there's disappointment, you know, sort of, for the community group, you know, sort of, so that's why I'm suggesting that there not be too many, um, uh, uh recommendations per year from this group, as a, as a beginning anyway, you know, sort of, this is a trial process. Um so, you know, sort of, I, um, I recommend this particular motion to you.
Um I had councillor Parker with his hand up earlier, did you wish to second this, this as amended?
I wanted to foreshadow, foreshadow.
Okay, I, first I just need a second up for.
Yeah, I want to do that.
I'll just get a second up for this first, does anyone wish to second this as amended councillor Chapel? Do, do you wish to speak? No, um councillor Hamilton.
Uh no, I was just going to say I'll foreshadow as per the business paper, that's all.
Okay. All right, um is there any further discussion on, yeah councillor Nielsen?
Uh just a correction, I think in terms of what we're endorsing here. If you look at the recommendation that council A endorse the draft Randwick Town Hall policy to be placed on exhibition, shouldn't it be endorse the draft illumination of Rand- Randwick Town Hall policy? So could we just make that an amendment, please, thank you.
Um are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, would you wish to close? Okay, I will put it, all those in favour, please say aye, aye, against? I declare that lost, we'll now move to the foreshadowed amendment put by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Parker.
Uh just as per, per the business paper, nothing further to add.
I think councillor, seconded by councillor Parker, councillor Parker, do you wish to speak? Councillor Chapel.
Um I suppose my one concern about it as per the business paper is that the decision to light the town hall up uh would be made by the general manager rather than by the elected council, which I think may significantly reduce our efficacy and supporting residents if they come to us on this, um and I think it would be preferable where possible that the general manager refer that decision to the councils for endorsement. Um most of the things I imagine we're going to be asked to endorse are things like, you know, bowel cancer month or whatever, which will be known significantly in advance, there's no reason they can't come to a council meeting, they don't need to be made by urgency. Um and then, um, if there are ones that are potentially, um, you know, a community group that may raise concerns among other segments of the community, I think it should come here for a proper debate and consideration, rather than, um, having that all in the hands of one person.
Um councillor said, I had a question from councillor Hamilton, did you wish to, you had a question also, so I'll go to a, the question from councillor said and then to councillor Hamilton.
Actually, um, just speaking on what councillor, um, Chapel has just said. If the general manager, it's included in the policy that the general manager has to stick to the policy, so he can't go outside of the policy if we adopt the policy. And I agree that important events should come to the council and point, I don't know what it is, but the last point is decisions whether to eliminate the Randwick Town Hall to mark national or international events. I just point, my question is point of clarification, is that anything of significance, commemoration, solidarity will come through as a resolution of council. So I think my question is that just about everything that councillor Chapel has just mentioned is covered in this policy. Or in these points.
Through to the general manager.
Um thank you, Madam Mayor, that would certainly be the intention.
Councillor Hamilton.
My question was actually answered.
Uh is there any further discussion? So I will put the motion put by, uh, councillor Hamilton's, uh councillor.
Endorse the draft illumination, Randwick Illumination Town Hall policy, we just need to include after draft Randwick, next word should be whichever way you want to have it, but illumination has to be in the, um, motion.
Okay, I will put it, all those in favour, against, declare that carried. We now move to C O ten slash twenty four, Maruba Seal Club, request for, from release of deed, moved by councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Sed.
I'd like to move as per the paper, but, um, I would just like to say it's been fifty four years that this, um, perpetual uh deed for, um, patron parking has, uh, has been in place and, um, Maruba Seals, they do a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to donations to local surf clubs, sporting groups, community groups, et cetera. Um so it just, it makes sense to, to now move on from, from that nineteen seventy deed. That's it.
Uh councillor Sed.
Concur with councillor Burst, the Seals Club does do a lot amongst the community, but I do have one question. There's, uh, no one can actually pinpoint exactly where it is, so can I just get it, just out of my own curiosity? Um if someone of the council office can exactly explain the car park at the back of Seals, that's what I thought, but I was told, no, that's not right, I'm sorry.
Um Mr Frank Joplas.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, ba- based on our historical records, it talks about the parking behind the men's dressing sheds at, at Maruba Beach, which has long been, uh, re- reconfigured. But ne- nevertheless, it's all Crown Reserve anyway, so it wasn't our land to start with, it was Crown Reserve.
Uh councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, just got a question, um, um, I, I, and you may not be able to answer it, but why was this never, uh, indexed for inflation over the years? It's, um, I mean, it, it, that amount is quite quite, quite, quite large in nineteen seventy, and, and, you know, I can imagine it's quite large in nineteen seventy, well we only just went into decimal currency, uh, not long before, and, and now it's, it's not, not that great of amount of money for a club like the Seals Club, so do you know why it was never, uh, in, uh, indexed for inflation or anything?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, two things, one, I don't think that was part of the deed. The second thing is, this was a condition of, of a, a pass gone consent, and honestly, we all just forgot about it. The Seals just kept paying it, the, and it was only when the new general manager came on board and said, can we have a look at this, that this came up.
Uh councillor Chapel.
Yeah, I suppose it's not a surprise to anybody that I oppose releasing a registered club from what is a perpetual deed. I think, um, you know, even though some of this may be lost to history, when it is entered into as part of the condition of consent here, um, it's intended to be perpetual, and yeah, it looks like we messed up in not indexing it, but it's intended to be perpetual. And I think if we go around cancelling things where we've said it's going to go indefinitely or for a specified period of time and we cancel it later because it doesn't feel convenient anymore, um, I think that sounds a really troubling message to developers and stuff like that, that hopefully we'll forget or hopefully we'll change our mind or they can lean on council to get out of obligations they've signed up to, I mean, um, I think we should be clear that that's what we're doing here.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Burst, would you like to close the debate? No, I'll put it, all those in favour? Against, no, I declare that carried. Um, yeah, so councillor Chapel would like her name recorded against? Thank you, uh and councillor Pendlefinney? Councillor Olive and the mayor. Um councillors, we will go to a short ten minute, we'll go to a ten minute, well, actually, we'll come back at quarter past. Um we will go then to C P eleven slash twenty four and then to the motions pursuant to notice. So, yeah, I think this is a good recommendation. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare that carried. We now move to notice of motion from Councillor D'Souza, proposed memorial to Heffron Park to recognise the contribution of migrants to Randwick Council, seconded by Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, councillors, I stand before you as a proud product of multiculturalism and a beneficiary of government migration policies that have encouraged inclusiveness and acceptance. I stand here knowing that my story is part of a larger Australian story, and I owe a debt to all those migrants who came before me. I know in my heart that in no other country on earth is my story possible. It is common knowledge that migration has had a positive economic, social and cultural impact on Australia. Migrants were willing to take menial jobs when first settling. Many migrants showed a disposition to hard work and sacrifice in order to establish themselves in their new country. Now coming to Heffron Park. After World War Two, part of the park was used as a migrant hostel. Between 1947 and 1951, Sydney took in vast numbers of migrants from continental Europe as well as Britain. The Woolstore Buildings erected in the Second World War were converted at Heffron Park to accommodation with a capacity of 1,200 people. Lured by the promise of safety and employment, many of these men and women found themselves living in overcrowded work camps, far from the Australian dream that they had envisaged. Sorry, I just lost where I was. I won't be long. These hostels provided private companies, labourers for industries such as mining, forestry and railways, or were employed by individual employers, running farms, cheese making facilities or other enterprises. Newcastle and its steelworks offered plenty of work opportunities, especially for migrants who did not speak English. Desperate to house the influx of post-war migrants, the government established the Bunnarong Migrant Hostel in the old naval stores at Bunnarong Park. The facilities and living conditions were considered one of the worst in Australia. Men for storage, not accommodation. The huts were not properly insulated, hot in summer and cold in winter. The migrants were forced to eat in dormitory style, mess halls, which they argued prevented privacy and any ability to have normal family life. The situation came to head in July 1953 when a group of migrants broke ranks and refused to pay for food, still paying rent. The group refused to pay for the army-style catering. They enlisted the support of local politicians at all levels. Randwick Council was supportive of the migrants. Alderman Harry Jensen and Lionel Bowen were especially strong advocates, highlighting the plight of the migrants at Bunnarong. Migrants from this and other hostels went on to build Australia from projects such as the Snowy Hydraskey, Port Kemble Steelworks, Wumrah, our roads, buildings and infrastructure. Yet, much of the history has been forgotten despite these migrants being essential to the growth of industry, infrastructure in post-war Australia. That is why I brought this notice of motion to council, and I hope that all the councillors support my notice of motion to build a monument or a memorial honouring the contributions of migrants to building a better and more culturally diverse Australia. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I commend Councillor D'Souza for bringing this to council because as, as we all know, as part of history, that the actual bike theory we're talking about today is part of what the roads that were made during those Nissan huts, et cetera. And actually, it was, it's pretty much modern history too, that a lot of those buildings still existed in the 70s and 80s. And actually it was it's pretty much modern history too, that a lot of those buildings still existed in the seventies and eighties. Um and as much as many of us know, especially the ones down next to Fitzgerald Avenue, that there was a lot of people who were saying that lived in the area who asked if the Nissan hut that used to be the old squash court could remain and maybe somehow become a museum and obviously that was a bit too far, but a plaque is a good way of doing it. And all I ask is if councillor D'Souza, because I don't want to do it as an amendment, but I just if he includes that after a plaque or memorial with the relevant educational material, because it'd be nice to know what as as you expressed virtually what you just said then, would be nice to be put next to it in an educational format so people do know what happened there. So if he accepts that, just a little bit of an addition, that's fine and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I accept it. Not just an addition, an important addition. It's always good to tell the story.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hamilton.
I um I commend councillor D'Souza for this motion. I think it is very important that we celebrate our immigrants. My grandparents came from Scotland with their three sons, my father and two uncles, and they moved to Victoria Markets. Um they've you know, the boat pulled into Melbourne and they were housed in an immigration camp there until they were then moved to Dubton and they stayed in housing commission until the day my pop died. So there's always either a firsthand experience of migrants coming to Australia and the impact on ours and others' lives or secondhand or thirdhand. So there's always someone you know and I think it's really important that we celebrate them, we recognise them and we look after them. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor D'Souza, would you like to close the debate?
Well, I'd just like to say, Madam Mayor, recently we've had debates about statues and uh First Nations people and all the rest and all these things are important, but we forgot the migrants. We often say Australia was built on the on the back of the sheep or wool. Well, I can add to that. This country, this great country of ours was built on the back of the migrants. Those humble people who had given up what their lifestyle, their culture, their friends, their family, to start anew. And in doing so, they helped build a great nation. And with them came all their culture, all their ways of life, their family values. Today I was at a French function, we talked about our French values of equality, fraternity and democracy, but all these cultures brought something with it and liberty, I should have mentioned as well. But all these cultures brought these values and together we've congealed into a very great community. Well, the story of Australia is one of the greatest stories that of multiculturalism. I mean, we are number one when it comes to assimilating people and showing others that we can live in peace. We can work together. We can build great, a great nation if we all work together to do just that. One goal, one country, one commitment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM eighteen slash twenty four notice of motion from councillor Burst. Investigate an outdoor gym at the Coast Hospital Memorial Park Little Bay. Councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Rosenfeld.
Thank you. In keeping with um since I've started on council, my one of my themes has been to have a fit community, to allow people to actively be um have active um be active in their community, have facilities that allow them to do that. Um and it doesn't matter whether you're wealthy, whether you're poor, whether you're old, whether you're young, whether you've got families, that you've all got the ability to be able to go to your local park, have a walk, be able to get onto a gym while one of you looks after the kids at the children's playground, the other one can be having a twenty minute workout and then they can cross over. So everybody in the family gets a go at getting fit. And I think it's important that our community, we and as a council, we have those facilities available to all of our community of all ages. So here I am once again pushing for, you know, the the Forgotten South Ward. Um another uh another park gym to enhance our community's appreciation and also gets people out into the parks because um if you've got the facilities out there, people will come. So I'm um I'm recommending that we we look at an outdoor gym next to the children's playground and that will enable our community to get out. The feedback I've got constantly from our community is Bill, we want more outdoor active opportunities and here's a great one to get people out, get them doing some exercise. Even you've got a senior, you've got a citizens hall up the road where they do some yoga and other things, there's an opportunity for them to even come down during their sessions and have a little bit of a workout on the the uh on the gym that uses your own body weight. So I I asked my fellow councillors to support this motion. It's it's good for South Ward, it's good for Randwick City and for all of our community. And healthier, stronger, fitter community is a great community as well. Thank you.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I reserve my right.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Burst, wish to close? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM nineteen slash twenty four notice of motion from councillor Burst. New toilets at the Coast Hospital Memorial Park Little Bay. Councillor Burst.
Um once again, in keeping with the South Ward and that Forgotten South Ward, we've got a town centre at Little Bay. Um but if you need to go for a pee or a number two, there's nowhere to go. You've got to go into the bushes. The only toilets are down at the beach. Can we have a bit of silence, please? I'd like to be heard in silence if possible. Um so it's important that we we have facilities available for our local um for our local community, residents and also people that are visiting that area. So I've had I had a few people told me a story of um they, you know, with their kids, they were down at Little Bay having swim. As they're walking back up, they'd just come past the children's playground and the kids are going, Daddy, Daddy, I need to go to the toilet. To look back down the hill, to go back down the steps, to go to the toilet on the beach um was not really an option. Going up to Little Bay shops, there's no public toilets there. You need to go and buy a coffee so you can grab the key and go into the 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 toilets that are available to the local shop owners. So it would it would be logical to have a toilet positioned near the the children's playground and the gym. Um and it's a it's a good halfway mark between the toilets on the beach and it's well, it's closer to the actual shops, the shop precincts. Um so it'd be a facility that's there for all of us. Um there is some elderly people, there is an elderly community in that area and they more regularly need to sometimes use the toilets. So having this facility available certainly help and that's the feedback I've received from our local community.
Uh councillor Hay.
Reserve my right.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Chapel.
Sorry, I just have a question through the relevant officer. Um are there toilets already planned for kind of a location around here? Or was that considered as part of the playground master plan that we voted on recently?
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you. Through yourself, Madam Mayor. The toilet block is separate to the playground strategy that was recently adopted by council. Um we haven't commenced any works yet in relation to the siding of the toilet block um at Little Bay.
Uh through to Mr Clark.
Thank you. Through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um there is funding allocated uh in or funding proposed in the draft twenty four twenty five budget for a new toilet block.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Burst, do you wish to close? Not now, put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM twenty slash twenty four notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, bottleneck at Garden Street, Maruba. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, this is a follow-up to, we recently had Let's Chat at Central Ward. Um and a resident came up to myself basically saying that on Garden Street um um he'd he'd done some study and some measuring, which actually gave me the measurements, which I put in the in the business paper, uh that from basically Boyce Road North, uh it 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 basically widens. So if you have a look at my first photo on the left, um um that's looking looking north and it basically um it widens. But if you have a look at the next one looking south and you can see St Aidan's Church there on the left, uh it actually narrows and I've got another photo on the other page, also looking north, where it shows it narrows. So basically what hap- well, the result of this is that there's a fair bit of congestion of um of traffic between Maruba Road and Boyce Road, where cars keep having to give way. And other residents have mentioned to myself of quite a bit of congestion at that roundabout in peak periods, which I actually experienced myself way back in the last council election, going to pre-poll by that way um and and seeing that congestion in in that peak period. So all I'm really asking for is traffic committee to look at the feasibility of of widening the road. Um I I do note that there are some signs that would have to be moved, but obviously that's what's traffic committee in their expertise can can look at in one of their upcoming meetings. Uh and and just to see whether it is feasible to to widen the the road because the nature strip is is quite wide of that area. Um and ultimately, it's uh it's it's safety both for motorists and pedestrians if if um if they would have been able to do that.
Uh councillor Hay.
Reserve my right.
Other, councillor Chapel.
Um I mean, I think once again, maybe we could just refer matters straight to traffic committee. Um I guess my only concern about this is we're kind of concluding what the solution here is here, which is widening the road, which is possibly the most expensive option to have on the table. And I wonder whether we might consider instead going to traffic committee just for options for addressing the issues um at hand because they may have some other, some signage or, you know, uh probably not one directional, but maybe even removing a couple of parking spots that might remove the issues without actually giving us a few hundred thousand dollars, very minimum um cost for widening a road at this place. Yeah, so I'm very happy to move that as an amendment um to amend just to say, rather than feasibility of widening road to say looking at options for addressing addressing issues at Garden Street. Sorry, Mr Kelly. Which doesn't rule out widening the road if traffic committee thinks that's solution, but just means everything else is still on the table, which I think is sensible.
Councillor Hay, do you also accept the?
Uh yes.
Amendment? Uh councillor Hamilton.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend this motion. I think this is something that as first-term councillors don't recognise. Um we did have a councillor in the last term who brought many items such as this that could have been on the traffic committee and that person was a Greens councillor. So it's not really a case of whether this should or shouldn't. Every single councillor has a right to put something up and I think that this is a very good motion. This per- you know, councillor Rosenfeld is he is looking after his residents and he was kind enough to also take in some feedback from councillor Chapel. So it's about working together, not working against.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rosenfeld, do you wish to close? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM uh twenty one slash twenty four, pardon me, notice of motion from councillor McCafferty. Council investigate issues concerning traffic safety, parking and access for emergency and council vehicles on Pitt Street, Randwick. Uh councillor McCafferty.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so residents have been bringing this issue to me for quite some time and you will see the photos of the council of the garbage trucks um stuck in the street. Um for many weeks last year and earlier this year, garbage was not picked up from the residents at Pitt Street. So there are significant challenges, as you heard from two of the residents earlier who addressed the meeting. Um for there are challenges that for larger vehicles and trucks um accessing and performing their functions in Pitt Street um because of the narrow access that is left when all the parking is occupied. And that is quite frequent because of the proximity to Marcelin College and the hospital and and university. Um so it's it was reported to me um in, I think it was January this year, that an ambulance hadn't been able to access the street. So I I think this is, this one's a bit of a no-brainer and the map speaks for itself in that it is a dead end. Um and it's got some pretty significant access issues. So this again, I would like council officers to to report back to council on the results of consultations and have this referred to traffic committee.
Uh councillor Nelson.
Yes, I commend councillor McCafferty for bringing this matter to council. It is a very tricky little street. I've had to negotiate it on many occasions over probably a period of thirty or more years. Um and I totally empathise and sympathise with the residents and their issues and it's certainly becoming more difficult with the with cars getting wider and wider every year. But I do think it's very important that the investigation be done because it's not ever a simple thing to say it should be a one-way street or that necessarily parking only on one side of the street, even though that might be the outcome. It's it's really good for us to have the council officers able to take a broad picture view of the issue and come up with the most reasonable decisions possible and certainly consultation with the residents. So thank you for bringing this forward, councillor McCafferty.
Thank you. Uh councillor Wilson, did you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCafferty, do you wish to close?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
In that case, I will put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM twenty two slash twenty four notice of motion from councillor Hamilton. Bid for Alguar New South Wales Conference and AGM twenty twenty eight. Councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I take this motion as read. I just wanted to share that I've thoroughly enjoyed attending Alguar. It's such an empowering conference. It really is about assisting females in local government to have a better understanding, connect with their fellow councillor females, hear the challenges that happen across the whole of New South Wales. So sitting down and speaking to someone from Dubbo and someone from Forbes and someone from Wollongong and Waukawaka. So hearing from a broad range of councillors, from all political persuasions, but from a range of locations is really empowering. The the line-up of speakers that we saw at Ride at the most recent Alguar was amazing. I thought that they were highly skilled and had achieved so much in their own professions and to come along and to share that information with us was really valuable. Um on a super personal note, I bought a book, I hope my daughter's not listening, she is not, um for my daughter's eighteenth birthday on from Effie Zahos. She was one of the speakers. She spoke about girls um getting control of their money. She has a book about girls getting control of their money. So I've purchased that for my daughter's eighteenth birthday. So just things like that, I think it adds value to us as individuals when we attend events like these, but also it also allows us to bring back that information back to council and be better councillors and to be better supporters of females, you know, in local government. So I really hope that everybody supports this. I really believe that we would be a fantastic location for Metro twenty twenty eight and we have plenty of time to put something together and I have full faith in our director. And I know that we'll be able to put on a fantastic conference.
Thank you councillor Chapel.
Um I don't have a lot to add, except I think it's an excellent idea from councillor Hamilton and I commend her for putting it on the books. Um I think we've all experienced from the general conference, just cow. just how rewarding it can be and how much we can learn about what is possible in our roles from talking to people from other areas and, you know, indeed how much we can share about our own experiences. So, um, I just commend the motion.
Uh, councillor De Souza.
Uh, yes, I'd like to put it to our general manager. How will this affect our budgets if we organise? Can, can we firstly afford it? And how will it affect our budgets?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, councillors, this is down the track a little bit, so there's time for us to build this into, into the budget, but certainly the economic benefit to the local businesses would, does, um, um, multiply exponentially outweigh whatever cost it would cost the council.
Are there any further speakers? Uh, you have a question, councillor Chapel?
I just have a question, um, just through to the relevant officer. Would the potential cost to us, uh, be included in the report that is requested as part of this motion?
Through to the general manager.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. There'd be indicative costs in there for the council, obviously, because putting in to go for the, the event would have indicative costs, but we wouldn't have the final cost for it.
I, and just wanted to add to that, that we still need to win it. So at Ride, we had, there were three, um, councils that gave presentations, and then the, uh, attendees voted on which presentation they thought was the best or, or had the best, um, facilities to offer or whatever it is that really, you know, impressed us. So we still have to win it. So that's why I think we've got plenty of time to get indicative costing, if we win it, and then, um, you know, bed down some real figures.
Uh, councillor Pendlefinney.
Yeah, I'd like to commend this motion. I agree, Alga's certainly been the best thing, um, for me, especially the conferences in Victoria and then this recent one. Um, it was also really fantastic to visit, um, the local Eastwood, um, dining precinct, extremely vibrant. Um, and so I hope that this, um, if we, we are successful, which I'm su- I, I do believe that we probably will be, um, that we can use one of council's amazing venues and also introduce people to areas that they might not have visited, um, in this LGA, you know, like, um, Kingsford and Kensington and things like, and, you know, Maruba, rather than have it in an already activated zone. Thanks.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to close? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare that carried. We now move to NM twenty-three slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Chapel, Maruba Reservoir. Oh, I didn't see.
I'll just speak to it. Um, cool. So, um, I'm not under any illusions that we are the decision-making body for this motion, for, for this decision, obviously. And I recognise that Sydney Water has a number of policies that are guiding what they are intending to do here. Um, I just think we should be really clear, and I've had a lot of residents get in touch about this, that, um, the policy they're seeking to apply here is a blanket policy that isn't actually based on a close assessment of what the risks are on the site. Um, and I think it's really appropriate for us to, you know, raise the concerns our community has about the significant number of trees and bushes that are going to be removed here, um, and see if we can talk with Sydney Water and work together, um, to see if we can minimise those impacts. We, we probably won't be able to stop it entirely, like I do understand they have a fairly firm policy on this. Um, but see if we can actually get something where we protect what is the most environmentally sensitive stuff, if possible. Um, yeah, so I think this isn't betting us to no trees removal ever, or, you know, Sydney Water get stuffed. It's basically just saying, for the moment, could we just pop a hold on this, uh, because the clearing's due to start soon? Um, and could we work with them, um, to try and minimise any impacts, um, of the amount of trees cleared?
Uh, seconded by councillor Nielsen, do you wish to speak?
Uh, just very briefly, um, just to say that I think this is very good, uh, worthwhile exercise for us to put in writing our strong position. I know that certain consultations and so on are, uh, taking place, but I think it's very important that people know and authorities know that this is how council feels and feel so strongly about it. So I think it's very good for us to make a simple statement like this, which sums it up.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, uh, move an amendment, and I sent it through to David Kelly. So basically, I'm looking at removing A, B and C and putting, uh, a new A and B, excuse me, which says, "Notes: Communication has begun between the relevant officers in Sydney Water and B, continued discussions regarding Maruba Reservoir until satisfactory outcome is reached." So basically, the reason I'm doing this is, um, I've had some contact with, um, some, I'm sure, as, as with others and, and you, Madam Mayor, because I've seen your, uh, your, uh, your email, your, um, uh, in the, uh, in the conversations, but had some conversations with some, uh, residents, um, that live, uh, basically right next to the, uh, the reservoir. Um, I made contact with, uh, uh, basically Ryan Zammatt, and then John Janeri wrote back. Uh, and he, uh, he basically said that councillor Rosenfeld advised that we have written to Sydney Water requesting that they stop the project until they review their proposal and seek an alternative that does not involve the removal of established trees and vegetation. So more or less, it's already been handled, um, by council officers to their credit. Uh, hopefully they have success, agreeing with councillor Chapel that, uh, we have limited jurisdiction. Uh, but I'd like to move that amendment, given, given those circumstances.
Sorry, I don't accept the amendment. Can I speak briefly as to why not? Um, I just, um, I don't disagree with what councillor Rosenfeld has said there. I just think council can also make a strong statement about what the position of the elected body is and that it, you know, we accord with the community on this and we would like to see a minimisation of trees. And I, in fact, I think that supports the council officers' kind of bargaining position in this to know that they have the elected council behind them when they're talking to Sydney Water.
Uh, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that councillor Rosenfeld is still very supportive of council officers' position. They have begun negotiations, and this amendment is just setting it in the right timeline. So we've just moved a little bit past, um, basically what the original notion, motion is, is to lobby the council to get on to it. And the amendment is saying, we acknowledge they're on to it and we consider that they will continue, um, and until a satisfactory outcome is reached, which is the same wording that was in the original motion. So I hope that councillors can support the amendment.
So may I just ask a question of councillor Rosenfeld? We, you, just to confirm, you wanted to replace A, B and C, not add these on because?
No, no, I, I don't, just replace, uh, tag.
Replace, taking out A, B and C. Okay, thank you. Um, I had councillor Nielsen and councillor Parker.
Well, I'm just wondering whether we could consider a further amendment, and that is that we, um, have the original motion as is, and then, um, add the proposed amendment as point D and E. And that would be what I would be foreshadowing.
Councillor Rosenfeld, would you accept that amendment? Um, at the moment, we're debating the amendment moved by councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor Hamilton.
I was just going to foreshadow moving as per the business paper, but with a single change to have continue in, just continue discussions rather than engage in following that feedback.
So, uh, councillor Parker, on the amendment.
I, I have a question through to the relevant officer. Um, through to the general manager, could you please outline what actions council has taken to date in relation to this and the feedback we've received?
Through to the general manager.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, councillors is, um, stepping it through. Council received the same, um, correspondence from Sydney Water that the council's got. Um, we initiated a, a, um, letter to Sydney Water, which councillor Rosenfeld has sent. Uh, at the same time, councillor Chapel sent through the notice of motion, so that both things, the council, elected council plus all the council offices, it was done at the same, at the same time. Um, since then, the mayor and I had discussions regarding it. Um, we've contacted the minister's office, Mr Jackson. Mr Jackson's office has, um, set up a meeting for myself to meet the Sydney represent- Sydney Water representative on site on Wednesday morning. Um, they've agreed in writing not to proceed with any trees to be come down until those meetings are concluded. We all believe there's a way forward where we can save as many trees as possible for this particular site. Um, the, um, member from Maruba has organised a meeting with the actual minister also to, um, also impress upon her that the importance of the trees to council and the con- and the concerns that council and the community have.
Um, councillor Olive.
Um, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm against the amendment and, and, yeah, and sort of, and I, um, uh, commend the original motion, you know, so because I think that that, um, uh, shows, you know, sort of, uh, reflects the, uh, level of concern of the community. And, you know, so that with the stronger statement is, you know, something that the community will expect from us because, you know, sort of, they, uh, they don't see the, the tension, um, the destruction of so many trees and the, uh, uh, the concomitant, um, habitat destruction that will go with it. So I think that, you know, sort of, we're putting that, uh, out there squarely and, you know, sort of making a statement on behalf of the residents. So, you know, that's why I'm against the amendment.
Councillor Nielsen.
Uh, the reason I wouldn't support the amendment is that I think the original motion is much stronger than the amendment, and notwithstanding, we are making some progress. I think the stronger motion is the one that will take greater, have greater impact.
So if there's no, uh, councillor Burst.
Um, I've just got a question, um, to the relevant officer. Um, that area around the, um, around that area, there's, um, there's a fence around there from memory, and then there's quite a, a, quite a nature strip before you get to the gutter. Um, that potentially would be probably a great spot with the two thousand trees we're planting at the moment to just start going bang, bang, bang all around the, the reservoir and have a nice big pocket of trees all around the outside. So this is on top of, you know, what happens internally within the fence line, but this is looking outside the fence line. So, well, is that being considered as part of the two thousand tree plants?
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, the two thousand tree planning locations are already predetermined in result of that project. Um, I'll have to take it on notice as to whether that nature strip location is included.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I will put the amendment moved by councillor Rosenfeld as seconded by councillor Hamilton. Um, all those in favour? All those against? No. Uh, yeah, call for a division. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Parker. Councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd. Councillor Burst, coun- councillor De Souza. All those against? Councillor Nielsen, councillor Chapel. Sorry, councillor Pendlefinney, councillor Olive and the mayor. I declare the amendment carried. Uh, that now becomes the motion. Vote on the motion. Does anyone wish to speak? All those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. We'll now move to NM twenty-four slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Hay, Kensington Park Cricket Nets.
Thanks everyone. I'll, I'll be brief. Uh, I was informed by a resident that a cricket net, uh, sorry, a cr- a cricket ball left the nets and struck a car. Uh, I did a quick visual inspection. I don't think it went through a hole in the fence. The issue was much more likely that the, uh, the, the cricket nets don't have a roof on them. So a ball that might go off to the slip would actually leave the nets. Um, if, um, so a quick visual inspection, so a quick inspection, uh, if any repairs are necessary from council and also, uh, consider in, in longer term, putting a sort of a more modern design which has a roof on the nets. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hamilton.
I reserve my right.
Are there any other speakers? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare that carried. Uh, we now move to NM twenty-five slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Hay. Rubbish bins at the Nine Ways intersection of Anzac Parade and Rainbow Street.
Uh, thanks. So, uh, the traffic lights have been recently removed. They used to go between Churchill's and the IGA. There are rubbish bins there. There's rubbish bins around the corners of Gardiner's Road. Uh, there's ru- rubbish bins at the light rail station, but there's none right at that intersection now. There's, uh, two garden beds right at that intersection. As you can see, they are filled with rubbish, and I think it's because, uh, if you're standing at the, uh, at the north side of that intersection, uh, you can't see where the rubbish bins are. So tha- that's what, that's what it is. We should have rubbish bins next to the lights and hopefully that means less, uh, rubbish in the garden beds. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hamilton?
I reserve my right.
Councillor Chapel?
Um, just a question. Um, just looking at the kind of diversity of rubbish there, it kind of looks more like rubbish that has blown out of a bin in some other location rather than being specifically dropped there. Is there like a way that we can send someone out to go and check whether it's one or the other of those things? Because it does just look like maybe that's the area where things blow into rather than, like, I've never seen anyone intentionally drop rubbish at that place. It's kind of not a very logical spot.
Well, so did you have a question? Sorry? Did you? All, all I'll say is that putting rubbish bins there will improve the likelihood that a good Samaritan will pick up rubbish that has blown in, and I'll put it in the bin.
Potentially very dangerous location, isn't it? Shall I ask that question, please, to the relevant officer? Location dangerous.
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, to answer councillor Chapel's question, yes, we'll go out and have a look to make sure, check whether something's been blamed there or whether something's been dumped there. One, one of the considerations that we'll have to consider is how garbage truck will actually be able to service it where the location is. So that'll, obviously, that'll all come back to you as part of the, um, when we, we consider it to advise you how we could actually go about doing it.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, councillor Hay, do you wish to close? I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare that carried. We now go to NM twenty-six slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Pendlefinney. Alga survey and experience of women councillors.
Thank you. Um, I will take this as read, as I will take as read the report. Um, I've referenced on the Alga website, which was announced, um, at the most recent, um, conference, which was last weekend. Um, Alga, as we've mentioned, is an incredible part of local government and has been the backbone of increasing representation of, um, women councillors, which was sitting at around thirty-one percent, I think, for years. Um, I think the report is difficult to read. Um, it is only brief. Um, and as a result of this report, um, a major research project has been commissioned um, in partnership with many, um, universities, which is fantastic to see. So this is about acknowledging the work that's been done by Alga. Um, as councillor Hamilton mentioned, it's amazing to go to these, um, conferences and meet women from all different councils. I remember meeting the twenty-two-year-old mayor of Brimbank, um, other couns- female councillors that work in really remote regions. Um, and so I think it's really important that this work is done um, and that we acknowledge, um, the incredible work that Alga has done in this area to continue to ensure that, um, we have, um, equal, if not more, representation of women on local council. Thanks.
Uh, is there a seconder? Councillor Chapel?
Yeah, I think, um, we just spoke earlier about the importance of Alga and kind of the work that is coming through it, uh, in the form of the conference, but I think also kind of the, um, research and policy work that the organisation does is really important and forms a really unique role. Um, this, you know, this motion is only really noting, um, that all of this research has been done, but I think it's important that we do recognise it, and I think it's important we do keep an open ear to the kind of potential inequality, you know. We thought about that when we were putting superannuation in. Um, I think there's a few other areas, um, and I just urge everyone to support the motion.
Uh, councillor Hamilton, you wish to move an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to move an amendment to remove A through to E and replace it with A and B on the screen I sent through to Mr Kelly earlier. A, write to newly-elected president councillor Penny Pederson. And B, thank the organisation and executive committee for the work they do in supporting women in local government. Uh, as I did mention earlier, it's fantastic to be amongst, um, a group of women that are so committed in this way. As I did mention earlier, it's fantastic to be amongst a group of women that are so committed in this way. And I believe that a simple thank you is enough because they already are doing so much work. They're working with a lot of organisations and I think it would be great also to congratulate and thank Penny Pederson.
Councillor Pendlefinney, do you accept the amendment?
Uh, no, I don't.
Councillor Hay, so we'll now move to the amendment, seconded by councillor Hay.
I'll second and reserve my right.
Councillor Chapel?
I mean, just against the amendment, this could have been brought as a separate motion if the thanking was important, which I think it is. But also by ignoring the work that they've been doing, it's unclear why we are thanking the organisation. So I think we should go back to the motion as it is on the business papers and very happy for this to be brought separately.
Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Sedg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to speak to the actual motion, but I'll speak to the amendment as well. Because it, I just, because I think the amendment highlights, and maybe the mover of the amendment might even think about this, that unfortunately in the, in the motion, which is being replaced, but it did have point, at point A, B, C and E, I can't go against, it's obviously facts. But in point D, I, I just think there's a glass half empty view of Randwick council. And when we should promote ourselves as being, when you get an average, obviously there's always a higher average and there's a low. And Randwick council is very much at the top of women in council. In the last, if you look at the last two terms, we've had three out of the five mayors have been women, so that's sixty percent. Six out of the seven deputy mayors have been women, that's eighty five percent. We've had, twice we've had a woman who's a mayor and a woman who's a deputy mayor, that's happened twice. We've never had a male mayor and a male deputy mayor. So we, not in my term, not in my, I said, I said that in the last two terms, in the last two terms, we've never had it. So that's a hundred percent of women being a mayor and a deputy. So what I'm saying is, because the figure here was twenty twenty one, I'm actually going back to twenty twenty seventeen. So in the last two terms, which is seven years, Randwick council has, and I forgot to mention, we also have eight out of fifteen councillors in this term, which is fifty three percent. So we actually have been above average. All I'm saying is that I can't deny any of these figures, but as an average, we have produced, we are well above average. And Randwick council should be proud of what we do. And rather being a very glass half empty and having a go at local government being very inequitable, we should be proud to say notes that Randwick council is very equitable and actually is a trailblazer amongst female participation in councils. If the, if the amendment would like to take that as a C, it's your.
Councillor Pendlefinney?
Uh, I don't, I'm just, yeah, I appreciate councillor Sedg telling us all statistics. I would ask if you have actually read the survey.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, is councillor Pendlefinney closing? She's speaking on the amendment.
She's.
She's speaking on the amendment.
I think it's, it's really difficult to hear somebody kind of rebuff the, the experiences that are well documented by reeling off the numbers of people who have held particular positions. It has absolutely nothing to do with the report that was published on the Alga website, which is a survey into the experience of women that they have documented. So all it is saying is committing to the research that's being undertaken, which is, you know, an extraordinarily deep and, you know, five university wide research paper. It is not about simple numbers, it is about the experience. And it, it does feel like a, a mansplaining moment. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I retract it.
Councillor Sedg.
Madam Mayor, councillor Pendlefinney, you're exactly right. And as you, and the reason why you're right is because I actually said A, B, C, D, E. Uh, I agree a hundred percent with them and that's part of the survey. All I was saying was that part, point D, which actually does mention numbers, thirty eight percent, twenty thousand elections, which means councillors, stubbornly low participation rates. And I was just quoting the participation rate of, that's what I'm saying. All I'm saying is that Randwick is, is trailblazing, it's punching above its weight. We're doing the right thing, that's why I had to quote the figures to show that glass are full, that we are doing a good job. No, no, we're just asking.
Is there any, we might move, is there any further speakers on the amendment? Moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Hay. If not, I will put it, all those in favour? Against? No. Declare the amendment carried, it now becomes the motion. Do you wish to speak? Any speakers on the motion? If not, I will put it, all those in favour? Against? Declare that carried. We now move to NM twenty seven slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Pendlefinney, small business support and empty shops.
Okay. Incredible panels that we had, which was inspired by the Liberal Government initiation and then expansion by the current Labor government into vibrancy reforms around town centres. And so I have noted that despite the fact that we have a very thriving area in, 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 may I say, eastward? In many of our other town centres, I have noted an extreme, like, there is quite a rise in empty shops. And we have some really fantastic examples out of Australia that have taken on really kind of low cost, even zero cost initiatives to address this. And I think that this is a really amazing opportunity here. I know we're already doing work in this, in this area, but I'd just like to kind of get a report back to see where we're out with it and what else can be done considering the expansion of these reforms that we've got going on. So an example I just wanted to put out there was the Renew Newcastle, which is now internationally recognised. It's now an organisation called Renew Australia, which assists town centres to renew their spaces that are unused. And Renew Newcastle kind of enacted a hundred and fifty visibly empty vacant buildings, which were attracting vandalism and supported small businesses and creatives and all different types of businesses with liability, insurance, tax and accounting ramifications to do pop-ups and things like that. And as a result, it became a booming area and they'd never seen such take up of the shops after that programme. It's quite a famous programme, you can look it up. And as I said, there's now an organisation called Renew Australia with a lot of the people who are now kind of twenty, you know, in their fifties, who had experience with activating it. So other examples that maybe might be lower, not as expensive and not financial at all. The city of Sydney has great ideas where they link entrepreneurs and small businesses and work out ways that they can kind of assist them to reuse unused space or start their small businesses. So I think it's a really amazing opportunity with these new initiatives with the Labor government, again, inspired by the Liberal government's initiation, to see more activity in our town centres like Matchville, like Randwick and even Clavally, which has seen a real drop off. That's why I kind of brought this motion. A lot of people have contacted me about shops that are sitting there empty and I'd love to see used. So I hope you can support this motion.
Is there a second, councillor D'Souza? Would you like to speak?
I just want to say I commend the councillor for doing this. Often she brings up issues which to me can be controversial and divisive, but on this occasion, we talked about truth telling and this is what truth telling, I said, led to these to healing and reconciliation. On this occasion, and she mentioned the word metrable, I can see it on my walk every day. Businesses are closing. Very challenging times for small shopping strips. So I think if we can do something, if we can assist these communities, why don't we do it? Great leadership on this one, councillor.
Councillor Hamilton?
I'll send through an amendment to Mr Kelly. And last council meeting, I put forward a motion to assist small businesses with their electricity bills. It's something that is very dear to my heart and I spoke about the fact that having empty shops in our town centres is really challenging for those businesses, residents. We need to have these pockets for amenities. But my motion is to note the work currently underway by Randwick council's economic development team. Continue their support of small businesses through a range of activities. Promote small business support via their social media channels. And mention there is Life Performance Venue Grant, which is the grant that you're talking about, Small Business New South Wales website. Realise Business, it's not for profit enterprise and it has free membership for all small businesses. And the Small Business Guides to Mentally Healthy Workplaces. There's a lot that happens when a business starts to fail or fails. People lose their jobs, people do fall into depression, business owners and their staff. They, because it's a small business, they become a little family and they commit so much, so many more hours and so much more time to their business to try to keep it profitable and to keep it open. And when that doesn't work out, there's a really sad and terrible flow on effect.
So may I just interrupt for a moment, see if councillor Pendlefinney would like to accept the amendment?
Um, so you're just adding on to it?
Oh, sorry, no, I should have said I'm removing A through to E and replacing it with A through B, C, D.
Yeah, no, I won't accept it because it actually, it doesn't actually add anything new. And what I'm, just wanted to, could I just finish?
No, because I still hadn't finished. Um, so as I was saying, there, there are a range of initiatives that Randwick council are currently undertaking. And we have, you know, in addition to a director of community and culture that I know is, their remit is to also work with activation in those zones. So we, as a council, I think we are putting a lot of effort into small businesses. We are trying to do as much as we possibly can to activate as many of the zones as possible as well. And as, as I said, in point D, the range of measures that are available, if we could get some promotion out to on our social media channels, it's always helpful to re-promote what the work that we're doing and the support that's available. I think that would be really fantastic, thank you.
Move to the second, councillor Rosenfeld?
Can I just?
Yes, just very briefly.
Sorry?
Just very.
Just hang on for one.
Yeah, just very briefly, I fully agree with councillor Hamilton. And small business is a backbone of the economy, I've said it before on the record and off the record. And it's very important that small business is successful in a lot, in a lot of ways, so, yep.
Councillor Chapel?
I note that the council's economic development team does do a significant amount of good work. I think the issue that's being raised by councillor Pendlefinney and that she's seeking to address here is that that work is not sufficient to deal with the increase in empty shop fronts. And I think a lot of them, you know, our, our colleagues around Kensington and Kingsford will see, a lot of them are land banking around the K to K, a lot of them are land banking for other developments. A lot of them are, you know, old buildings that are kind of rundown where they're not sure what they're going to do with them and they're kind of waiting and so they're not being used for anything. And what you end up getting is it kind of degrading in the character of your town centre. I remember Renew Newcastle extremely well, actually, it was a very visionary program. And some of the first few times I ever went to Newcastle, just as a, you know, day trip, was because of that program. Because they had really exciting stuff going on in those shop fronts. And then they had like arts programs and things that kind of came out of it. So I think what councillor Pendlefinney has put on the table here is actually a really visionary process for getting those town centres interesting and vibrant and thriving, that is beyond what our programs are currently able to do. And it's because those programs are kind of responsive to applicants. But if you're sitting there land banking a property, you're hardly going to be like, oh, I'm going to see what grants are available to use it as a shop in the meantime. Like you're waiting for, you know, multimillion dollar windfall, which is completely right. But what it means is that the people in that town centre are paying the price for your eventual gain. And in the meantime, we could be doing something fun and interesting with it. Every time we ask our residents what they want, they say they want fun, interesting and diverse town centres that they can walk around where there's interesting stuff going on. This is a really good way, a practical way of doing that, it's just a report, I think we should really support it, see what comes back and see whether there's some stuff we could take to make Randwick really exciting.
Councillor Pendlefinney, you are speaking on the amendment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, yeah, I think what, what the amendment does is actually knock out any additional work, which does take into consideration the change in initiation, like change in initiations from the state government, which is trying to support town centres. You know, and at least if you could put in there, like, I don't know, like some kind of like linking strategy. The, the report here I've asked for is actually just a report on the cost to produce a report into how many empty shop spaces there are and whether we can create a program which links entrepreneurs and small business. So it just kind of like, doesn't really change anything that's happening.
Councillor Sedg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll look at you and I, you've probably been shocked, but I actually can't support the amendment. As councillor Pendlefinney and I commend this because what you've highlighted in Newcastle, I actually used to be, that was one of my sales reps areas in Newcastle and Hunter Street was an absolute debacle. Shit mode, yeah. And, and I always remember, and I was, our company was part of it, that they gave the shops over to white collars, architects, et cetera, lawyers and all that, encouraged them to come. Because they realized it was tattoo parlors, brothels, et cetera. It was a real no man's zone. And then they encouraged white collar to go in there and once white collar went in, and they were giving, the council was paying the rents for some people. I know we couldn't do that, but it's Newcastle council. So they were paying the rents for architects, et cetera, to move in. Once they did, spruced up the area, they gentrified it, they put wine bars, clubs, whatever, restaurants, it all came. It's one of those classic examples of if you build it, they will come and they came. But my only other, so I, I can't support the amendment and I support the original motion. But also I'd like to just mention too that going by memory, councillor De Rocher brought a very similar one because the shops at Matchville were empty and he asked for something to happen. So I might actually on another occasion ask for a report on all the previous motions over the last few years. Because I think all the ones that haven't been, and this is not because of yours, but I'm just saying nearly all of them are regurgitating. And I think they'll be regurgitating a lot more in this year, but I'll talk about that later.
Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually commend the amendment. And the reason why I commend the amendment is I think it more accurately reflects a lot of the extensive work that is being undertaken by Randwick council staff to date. I know that council went through quite a comprehensive economic development strategy in the recent period of time where there are a range of observable, sorry, not observable measures at which council will assess the performance of our executive upon. We went out to the community in relation to the economic development strategy, the objectives as well as the resourcing attached to that. I, I think the amendment more accurately and fulsomely reflects a comprehensive body of work which is there. This would seek to add an additional task on top of that, noting that the ambition of that strategy itself is already quite significant. My concern is that by adding this as an additional measure on to that, it would lead to unintended consequences of things which we've. it would lead to unintended consequences of things which we've already gone out to the community and consulted upon, ah, endorsed and, ah, a- and resolved as a council, um, i- on multiple occasions in order to do. Ah, and we would potentially be departing, um, from, ah, that commitment, ah, not only to the community but also to small business, ah, in relation to that. What I would also say is the economic development strategy which council has endorsed is not based on the vibe. Ah, it is not based on, um, a, a, an observation or anecdotal of, as to what's worked elsewhere, um, but is actually based upon the evidence and the concrete work of, um, council staff. Um, I, ah, would like to say that I wholeheartedly endorse, ah, that work, but not only, ah, that, um, that I have confidence that that strategy, ah, which we have endorsed on multiple occasions is actually the appropriate roadma- ah, roadmap, ah, and that council staff in, um, putting that strategy together, um, have considered what other councils are, are doing, ah, in this particular space. Ah, my concern is that, ah, bringing this back, um, would have resourcing implications, um, that the motion as drafted, which is seeks to amend, admits, ah, a, an assumption as much, um, by raising that there would be a cost, but not only would there be a financial cost, there would probably also be a diversion of staff time. Ah, a- and, ah, in my view, that would be an unnecessary distraction. Ah, it is for those reasons that I support the amendment, ah, and I do not support the motion, ah, as drafted.
Are there any further speakers, Counselor Hay?
I'll briefly say that, um, yeah, the work currently underway by Randwick Council is the right path. Um, I've talked and, I've spoken many times on, ah, council about the importance of supermarkets bringing life back and that is the wor- path we're currently on, that is the right way to bring life back to the Kensington Town Centre. Um, frankly, I, I don't want our Economic Development Team, ah, being diverted and spending time on another strategy. I want them to focus on the path they're currently on. Ah, I urge everyone to vote for the amendment, thank you.
So I will now put the amendment moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Rosenfeld, all those in favour? All those against? No. I might go to a division, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Counselor Hamilton, Counselor Hay, Counselor Luxford, Counselor Rosenfeld, Counselor Parker, Counselor McCafferty, Counselor Wilson, Counselor Burst and Counselor De Souza. All those against? Counselor Pendlefinney, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Chapel, Counselor Oliver, Olive, Counselor Sed and the mayor. I declare the amendment carried. Now becomes the motion, um, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against? Declare that carried. Um, councillors, we now will move into closed session. Councillors, the meeting's not yet closed. Ah, we now move back into open session. Um, I'll declare that, ah, confidential items, C S eleven slash twenty-four, C S twelve slash twenty-four, C S thirteen slash twenty-four and G M two slash four were all, ah, carried unanimously. Um, I now declare the meeting closed at ten forty P M.